I think we're going to start. For all of those who don't know who I am, I'm Jamie Barrett. We've had a lot of transition in employees at the State Office of Education or State Board of Education, especially in like the last two months. So I'm going to kind of introduce everybody that's new in our office and new positions. So you kind of have a face with a name. Right now Natalie Grange no longer works for the State Board of Education and Vaughn Horton also retired. So we have a vacant Assistant Superintendent of Financial Operations, which we are not replacing. And now we have a new School Finance Director, which is me. Yay! So we also, I'm also fulfilling the MSP Administrator at the same time until we find a new employee for that. So dual roles. So if you email me or call me and it takes me like two hours to get back to you, I'm sorry. We also have a lot of new employees in our office. So I'll start at the front. Rebecca Nelson is our Grants Manager. She is over the Utah Grant System. Also helping her is Tracy Peterson, both manning the Help Desk line, the Help Desk questions, all of that funness is their office. We'll go to the back. So Brett Baltazar is now Vaughn Horton. So if you have questions with UPEFS and all of that, that is now Brett. Brett has various new members on his team. So we'll start at, the newest member is Ashlyn Luffel. She's right here. Next to her is Danny Davis. And next to him is John Palmer. So all four of those individuals are over the accounting, reporting, anything else, pretty much UPEFS, all of that is that team right there. If you have any questions, that's who we need to relate questions to. If you look at your agenda, Scott was supposed to be here to present on legislative updates. However, the Legislature also scheduled an education inter-meeting this morning. So Scott is there and I'm here. So I'm going to hurry and cover both. Sorry, this is going to be back and forth a little bit. The first link is to the Bill Book. And I don't know how many people are familiar with this. This book pretty much is my bible for the entire fiscal year. It goes through and talks about what happened during the session, all the bills that happened with education, the funding. Let's see if we get to the back. Okay, so what we're on right now is what the LFA presents and gives to us every year. It basically outlines what happened in 19 and what's projected to happen in 20 for every MSP program. So if you ever want to know what a program received in funding, this sheet in the Bill Book and what I also, these sheets are also in every Legislative Estimate Book, Mid-Year Update Book and the Final Book. Okay, so starting with the $96,342,400 all the way down to this $147,000 is the total Basic Minimum School Program. Here's the infamous line. So if you keep scrolling Brett, we'll go to Related to Basic and that starts right here with Transportation at $98 million. Keep scrolling down this entire page. That's total Related to Basic. One more page down Brett. Stop right there. This is voted in board. Nope, this is voted in board. One more page Brett. And for School Districts, capital outlay is right here. So all of this information is in the Legislative Estimates. As you scroll through this book, you will see that it starts to go through kind of the basic stuff that happened during the session and then goes through every single bill. So if you're looking for a specific bill, all the House bills are listed first. After that, all the Senate bills are listed. And this is that first link on the website. Also, the second link is the summary, which basically goes through what the State Board of Education proposed to the Legislature during the session for funding requests. What RFA stands for Request for Appropriation from Legislatures. And then what actually got funded out of Senate Bill 4 and other bills throughout the session. And then you want to click on the last one? The last link is Legislative Estimates, which you all should hopefully have. In here, if you scroll like to the kindergarten program for school districts, here, I'm going to go faster. So in here on the district side, I've had a lot of people ask me, what are the program codes? All of the program codes are listed on the district's side for the program. So if you're looking for a specific program or revenue code, find the program on the district's table and the revenue code and program code. This is a bad example because kindergarten doesn't have a program code. But if they do, they're both located on this table in here. So you should be able to find everything. Go back to the PowerPoint now. I have a lot of back and forth, sorry. I'm backwards. We're just going to skim through some of the highlights. Student growth. So what the Common Data Committee is expecting from the projections that they concluded for this upcoming fiscal year compared to where we're at this year is a 1.2% increase in students. In addition to that, the Legislature passed a 4% increase. So there's a total 5.2% increase for the minimum school program, which resulted in, along with all the other funding, about an 8.4% increase for everything just in minimum school. As we look at the entire education budget, it's about a $5.58 billion budget is what we're working with for fiscal year 20. On the bottom of there, you can see that the WPU value went from $33.95 to $35.32, which is an increase of $137 or 4%. Just for ongoing funding for enrollment growth, we added another $163.7 million. Educator salary adjustment, which is those teachers that earn the stipends for the qualified teachers, they grew and we needed an additional $4.3 million for that program for this year in 19. That also gets added to 20 also. I'm going to fly through these because you want to get to the meat of the stuff. Okay, HB 236, the Teacher Salary and Supplement Amendments. This bill changes the individual's eligibility for a supplement, which now includes, so not only did we have math and science teachers, chemistry, physics and special ed. If a teacher has one of those assignments and also has been teaching for 10 years in that assignment, they now qualify for TSSP funding. So that's a new addition and we estimate that's going to be about an additional $4.9 million for those educators that qualify. Senate Bill 115 is the High Need School Amendment. This is a new program that LEAs will have the opportunity to submit a grant application. Basically, you get additional funding for a first-year educator in a high-need school. So if you want to know what high needs means, the Legislature has the definition that USBE will consider Title I status. They'll look at low performance on the school accountability system, high percentage of students enrolled that are at risk for intergenerational poverty, also homelessness. They're looking at a high ratio of student to educators, higher-than-average educator turnover and any other factors the USBE determines for this grant program. So look forward to that being pushed out through the Utah Grant System. Also, we're going to talk about HB 373, which is the Student Support Amendments, or it has several names. The one that the LFA assigned it was the Student Health and Counseling Support Program, which is slightly different than on here with it says Student and School Safety Support. We'll talk about that in detail later. Also, Enhancement for At-Risk received $5 million of new money for fiscal year 20. And we'll also talk about Senate Bill 149, which is the Teacher and Student Success Act. So that's TSSA instead of TSSP. So we've got lots of acronyms that are similar. We'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. All right, next one is HB 227, which is the Utah Computer Science Grant Act. This is going to provide additional grants to LEAs for improving, improving the computer science learning outcomes and course offerings. This is $3.1 million for fiscal year 20. So that will also be a grant that will come through Utah Grants. Senate Bill 112 is the Public Education Information Systems Uniformity Act. USBE, this is money that went directly to USBE in order to improve our systems here. We have until July 1st of 2023 to completely revamp all of our systems and come up with a new information management system, which will interface with each LEA's data system, your educators, your student information and your financial system. Basically, it's going to be a one-port login for educators, for business folks, for outside third parties, and pretty much anybody will have one login access to the system in which depending on what roles you have, you can get access to student information, you can get access to financial data, educator data, basically whatever your role allows you to get access to, you'll have one sign-in to do it all. 2023, we're really excited about that. That is the, well, to USIMS is what we're calling it. Money that went just to us. Senate Bill 172 is Economically Development Amendments. Basically, the STEM Action Center. We took over the endorsements, the STEM education endorsements from the STEM Action Center. So we'll be giving out that $5 million for those teachers that qualify for those endorsements for STEM programs. The last one, the One Point, the Create Utah Digital, that's actually Adobe Creative Suite licenses for 7th to 12th graders. Basically, it's a mobile license where they can use at school or at home to access the Adobe Suite. So that will be coming out shortly. And then the Learn Platform, we've got another $1.7 million to keep that program up and going for digital teaching and learning. Just really quickly, the last things, too, from Student Transportation, got another $2.5 million of new money. Beverly, Taylor and Swartson's Art Program got $1 million of one-time money for fiscal year 20. The Dual Immersion Program got $774,000 of new ongoing funds. Also, they got $100,000 to implement Senate Bill 173. Basically, that is going to give grants to LEAs that are already participating in the Dual Immersion Program to basically offer online language courses to students who don't enter, they're pretty much late enters, so they're not getting right in. If your program starts at kindergarten, they're maybe coming in as second or third grade. It's to get them up to speed in the language program by offering online language courses for them. And the last one, Senate Bill 37, is for Interventions of Reading Difficulties. That basically extends the deadline for that program that was supposed to sunset July 1st of 19 and it now sunsets July 1st of 2024. All right, get into MSP stuff. In a board meeting probably about two months ago, the Board decided to change up Enhancement for Accelerated Students Program. Basically, what the Board Rule now says is the distribution is going to change slightly. So before it was 1.5% or $100,000 that went to the IB program. That is staying the same. What is changing is the funding source for Gifted and Talented and AP. So 60% of the funds is going to support the Gifted and Talented Program and 40% of the remaining appropriation is going to AP. So before that was 62 and 38% roughly for those programs. So a slight switch in funding between the two. Also, the distribution methods are changing. For IB programs, it's now based on the number of students enrolled in IB programs, where before 50% of the appropriation went equally to all programs that had an IB. And then the other 50% was based on those that passed with a 2 or higher. So we're changing to an enrolled model rather than scores passed and actually approved program. Also, for AP, that's changing slightly also. 50% of the appropriation is going to be distributed based on students enrolled in AP programs. The other 50% is going to be distributed based on a per-exam amount for those that are passing with a 2 or higher. Before it was a 3 or higher. So slight little, you may see a redistribution in funds for the IB and AP program based on this formula. And this is going into effect for 2020. Any questions on AP or IB or Gifted and Talented? Charter School Administrative Costs. Statute 53 F2306 added a new line where it says for fiscal year 2020, the State Board shall distribute $40,000 to each charter school that enrolls fewer than 400 students. So basically, if you're $399 and less, your admin cost will basically be $40,000 for 2020 only. This was only a one-time appropriation and one-time language. So if you fit into that bucket, don't count on receiving, again, $40,000 next year, meaning 2021. It'll depend on what the legislation happens this upcoming session. So just know that that is a one-time bump. Know that in your Legislative Estimates that those are on projected headcount. So when actual headcount comes in this October, if you're over the 400, your funds will increase from that $40,000. Any questions on admin costs for charter schools? Okay, yes?
Is this an additional pot of money or it's just whatever we've been getting is now changed to $40,000?
So if you only, so the question was about the funding for, for admin costs. So if you only enrolled 350 students, it was 350 times by $100 was the old formula. So for 20, if you are $399 and less, you're automatically at $40,000. Any other questions? All right, Charter School Local Replacement. The Legislature also added $4 million ongoing to local replacement for charter schools with the caveat that it is distributed, that $4 million on an equal-per-student basis. So there's an equal, there's a dollar amount per student that goes. So in your book and on your summary, you will have two lines for local replacement. The original funds that were in that pot that are based on the local replacement formula, that is $2,355 per charter school student. And then you'll see a second line, which is the distribution of that $4 million equally between every charter school student in the state. So two lines, both the same purpose, both for local replacement. Any questions on that? I just want to make sure you guys are clear on how that works. All right, where I think we'll have the most questions at. The two programs that change the most are the new programs this year for TSSA, so Teacher Salary, Teacher-Student and Success Act Program. And HB 373 for Mental Health. So we'll dive into those. I had lots of people call me when the Legislative Estimates came out and wanted to know why their, their flexible allocation went down so much. And if you recall from last year, we pleaded with you to make sure you remember that the ongoing money was only $7.7 million. The Legislature put one-time money into that program, which bumped it quite a bit. It was $65.15 million. So this year, coming out of the session, they removed that $65 million that they put in there and they put it back into where it should have gone in the first place was the TSSA program. You should all have these slides. I emailed them out this morning to you. If you don't have them, let me know. So we took, there was $46.5 million with a, which was a 1.5% increase on the WPU that they put in flexible allocation. There was $18.65 million that came out of the new tax rate that was implemented, the WPU value rate. They added $15 million of education funds this year. And the WPU value tax rate for fiscal year 20 is going to bring in another $18.8 million, which means TSSA has $98.95 million in it for fiscal year 20. Any questions on where the funding came from, where it's going? Okay. This allocation has two parts. There is an LEA allocation and there is a school-level allocation. So if you have multiple schools within your LEA, listen to the school-level allocation. If you are just one charter school with one location, you just have to do the LEA allocation. Basically, how the state will distribute your money to you is based on the budget. So Legislative Estimates, your budgeted WPU's for the basic school program. So again, we're talking about kindergarten on down to class size reduction. Whatever WPU's you generated in those programs there become what will fund you for TSSA for fiscal year 20. I've had a lot of questions on, is this going to change? The answer is no. We did it based on budgeted numbers, so you guys could start setting budgets and plans and get those in place for this year. The only caveat is, is it does not include foreign exchange WPU's. So if you participate in the foreign exchange program, those WPU's do not count towards the total basic program WPU's for this program.
So no change or not change?
Nope, no change. We're doing it based on budgeted WPU, so that will not change. We don't want to disrupt when you guys are trying to submit your frameworks to the state and develop plans for fiscal year 20. We're trying to keep that allocation as stable as possible.
Is there a deadline when you have to submit this?
So we're going to be pushing this out through Utah Grants, probably within the next week or two. When you get that notification for TSSA and Utah Grants, you will need to submit your framework. That is the only thing that the state is requiring you to submit in order to get access to this funding. Once you submit your framework and it's received by somebody at the State Office, the State Board, we will start flowing your funding on a 1/12 basis that following month. Okay, yes?
So when you say this is based on budget, are you talking about current or are you talking about projected?
We're talking about projected because it's Legislative Estimates. So it's based on your projected WPU's for every program that we put together.
And have related student count calculated by?
The Common Data Committee on Projected Enrollment for Fiscal Year 20. Correct.
So to sum up really quickly, the, the number that we're seeing on the Legislative Estimates that's come out is our number for next year, true?
Correct. The number on Legislative Estimates is your appropriation for fiscal year 20. It will not change.
So the deadline to submit the framework is probably 2/30?
So here's the caveat. I'm not over the program, so I don't know the deadline. However, your funding won't turn on until you submit your framework. So the sooner you submit your frameworks through the Utah Grant System, the next week or two, your funding could show up on July, on the July allotment.
But it has to be approved by the Board first?
It has to be approved by, I believe it's Teaching and Learning who has this program.
So it's like trust lines?
Correct, it's like trust lines, except trust lines is lump sum and this will be on a 1/12. So whatever your allocation is, the distribution is on a 1/12 basis.
We will get those ready to do that.
Correct, correct. We will, I will send, make sure we send out an email to everybody, letting them know that TSSA has been loaded in the Utah Grant System. You'll get a notification saying that that application is available. Basically, what you're going to have to do is submit, just like normal, a little budget about where you're going to spend your funding at, attach your framework to that application and send it back in. Once USBE sees it, awesome, you're checked off on the list, your funding should flow that very next eligible allotment memo.
So there's no format, no standard format?
So the guidance for the framework says that LEA's framework should be designed to improve school performance and student academic achievement. So it's very, it's very much a local decision. Whatever locally you decide to have that framework look that fits the criteria in statute and Board Rule, great, get it submitted to us. As long as it's not blank, we will take it. Just a couple of caveats. You cannot use your money to supplant funding for an existing public ed program. You can't use it for district admin cost, so how you interpret that, or capital expenditures. And I will send out later, well, I think, I'll send out later today. It's R277927 is the Board Rule that goes along with this funding source. And in it, if you want to look at what we define as district admin costs, the Board is defining that as... Okay, so you cannot support adult education or preschool programs. You can't pay for contracted services commonly performed by the following staff: school-level admin staff, building or maintenance staff, including custodial, transportation staff, child nutrition services staff, operation or facility support staff, or district-level staff. That is what the Board is including in that district admin pot. Any questions on that?
So you said you can use like either 40 or?
Yeah, we'll get into that. Your, your head of EMO, hold on. One, one second. Okay, we'll keep going because there's lots more. All right. So based off, just off of the top, 25% of the allocation is used to, could be used to increase base salaries and benefits for school personnel. Your school allocation, so if you have multiple school locations within your LEA, your school allocation is based on prior year ADM of each individual school divided by your LEA's total ADM, tied by your remaining allocation. So if you, I will also send out the school-level ADM sheet to everybody in case you don't have it already, so you can figure out if you have multiple campuses for multiple school locations, what your prior year school ADM is. If you have schools, this especially relates more so to charters, but I know districts are opening up schools also. But if you have schools in your first year of operation, they're funded off of their projected October 1 headcount. Yes.
Jamie, when we talked about this, the allocation method by school can be whichever or whatever the district chose, as long as it was a, as it made sense, but are you saying we have to use a prior ADM by, by total?
Correct. That's what, that's what it stipulates. That's what the Board has decided. You have to come up with an allocation. Whatever you're going to use, so if you do prior year October 1 headcount, you just need to make sure that that's in your policy. That's the only stipulation that the Board had, was making sure that it's documented somewhere on how you're going to, to do it. But the, the Board, I believe it's the Board Rule 927 has said that you use prior year, you school-level ADM value. So if you get everyone's ADM value divided by your total, you can do a quick allocation, but excluding new schools.
So when you say prior year, do you mean 17, 18?
Yes. Because that's what we have right now. We don't have 19 yet.
What happens if we're, we've had boundary changes, we've had a lot of things like that going on?
I would think that you would have a policy that says we are using prior year ADM, but due to other concerns, we've adjusted based on, like if all of a sudden you've lost 150 students from one school because now your boundaries change and that increases to another school, then you would adjust your allocation appropriately.
It was write-up process and how it's going to be?
Correct. Yep, write-up a process, document it. If it's documented, it happened. All right, so the second caveat to this is an LEA can also use 40% of their allocation for salaries and benefits for school personnel if they meet the following criteria. So if you're a school district, your Board, your Board has to have a Board-approved levy or you have to increase your levy by one increment. And your school district's average teacher salary is above the statewide average. Or if you're a school district, basically a rural school district in the fourth, fifth or sixth class, or if you're a charter school, all you have to have is your average teacher salary is less than the state's average teacher salary. So you may wonder where that information is at. So go back to that folder. This one. When you open up 5B. So in, oh, I think it's been two board meetings ago, we presented to the Finance Committee for the State Board, can you increase the size of that Brett, please? Three different options. The first option was to come up with a statewide average, was to use. So what we took was teacher salaries reported in your financial information that you send through UPEFS. We took that information, we took total educator FTEs out of Cactus. We divided those two by each other to come up with each LEA's average educator salary. It is not the best method, but we had like two weeks to hurry and come up with it after the session. So we did what we could do. This is all, this is...
Not good.
It's not my day today.
Do you need to plug this?
Yeah, probably. I'm just gonna... Tracy, do you want to run over to her and see if I'm? It's completely dead. I swear. Okay. Okay, we're just going to go with a... Oh, okay.
So is this 25% of allocation, is it for chapter allocation for schools? Or is required of the use of funds?
So it's required of the use of funds. You can use, you can, so read HB 149, Senate 149, which I'll send out later today, in addition to the board rule to everybody, so they can read through those to make sure they're understanding. Basically, what the board voted on was, we gave them three options to come up with average teacher salary, so I went over the first one. The second one was to take a sum of each column and divide the total by each other to come up with an average. And the third was to take a weighted average. And you scroll all the way to the bottom, like it's really hard to see the colors, but... When the colors change, Brett. Okay, tell me what school's the top one? Okay, so from INPECC down, would qualify under the first option? So as we go to the second option, that is that light, kind of brownie ugly color, and I think South San Pete is the last school that qualifies under that option. Or there's the third option, which includes the additional five or six schools, I think. That's the third option. So any, so the board made a motion to approve option three, which is everybody that is at, what's that last school? Wasatch School on down would qualify to use 40% of their allocation for teachers' base salaries and benefits. So the only caveat that I want to include in here is if you used 40% of your appropriation to increase salaries, and let's say next year because you did that, you are now above the state average, that 25% to 40%, you would have to come up with that money out of some other source because you cannot use 40% of that appropriation next year. So just as you, as you're planning your budgets, if you are somewhere along that top area, you might just want to be careful. If you get bumped above the average statewide salary, you are no longer eligible to use 40%. You can only use 25% of your appropriation. Any questions on that?
Did you send this to us?
I will. I will send you everything. Also, this method we're doing for average teacher salaries this year is only for fiscal year 20. We're trying to figure out a better way to figure out what really is your base teacher salaries for your educators and how many actual educators are in your school. I know Cactus isn't the most reliable, and I know there's other things coded to the object code category that we pulled this information from. So we may be doing an additional UPFS report to capture just that information to come up with a better average teacher salary for 2021. Want to go back to the PowerPoint, please? I'll send all of this information out to all of our contacts. Okay. So in order to allocate your money to an individual school within your LEA, they also have to have a success plan that's been approved by your local board. So make sure that you get your schools on board and start working with the school principals in order to do that. A school can use 5% of their individual allocation for school personnel retention or at the, or at the principal's discretion. So in addition to using the 40%, the principal at each individual school can use up to 5% for retention bonuses. Again, capital expenditures are not included or not eligible, and if you use it for a purpose that isn't included in your success plan or framework, that also is not allowed. So make sure that your individual school plans and your overall LEA framework covers whatever you're going to use your money for, for allowable purposes. And then also, each individual school that receives an allocation has to submit a description of the budget and actual expenditures, how the expenditure's related to their plan, how the school measures success with their participation, and they're submitting that to your LEA's governing board. Okay? Any questions on those requirements? Kathleen? Yes, so on the legislative estimates, there's already a program code set up for TSSA. I want to say it's like 5687 maybe? 78, something like that, but it's, it's on there. Any other questions? Okay. We're going to move on to my next, most favorite program, is the Student Health and Counseling Support Program. So this one, there is not an allocation for your individual LEAs in the legislative estimates, and that is because this is a qualified grant program. So you have to submit a application in order to receive this funding, and I believe they did a webinar yesterday for it. I think applications are due by June 7. Brett, can you go back to my folder? And I think I have one titled number six. You do, and do 16 in a minute. So if you, oh, sorry, we have another question.
So what does it mean you can't use 5% for uniform salary increases?
So the 5% is for retention. So basically, it's principal's discretion for bonuses for retention. You have to use the 25 or 40% depending on which one you qualify. Those ones are the, the eligible ones for salary increases and benefits.
But the rest is like for technology?
There's lots of allowable uses. Whatever your framework plan says that you're going to do it, that's what you need to use it for. Okay, so this is HB 373. This is the application. If you scroll Brett a little bit, right there. The application is not due until June 7. However, if you get it in by the 16th, the 20th, or 29th, USBE has committed their staff to review your application and give you any feedback before it's officially submitted. So because it's a qualified grant and you have this option, I would try to get it in by these dates so you can get some feedback to make sure whatever you're applying for, the wording that you're using, the uses complies with whatever the application says, so nothing gets disqualified. So take advantage of that. If you have questions, Sarah, Leah and Sarah are both on here. If you keep scrolling down, I think Leah's information's at the bottom of here for questions. Leah Voorhees is spearheading program. If you have specific questions, she is the one to send them to, unless they're financial, then they come to me. Go to 6B. We've also had a lot of questions on the match because this program requires a dollar-for-dollar match, and a lot of LEAs are questioning what is considered a match? Is that only new money? Is that if I hired a counselor in fiscal year 18, 19, does that hiring of that counselor qualify as a match for this program? And the answer is yes. So if you have specific questions, I will send this out to everybody also, but this is continually updated on our website under the Student Support Department. There's a whole bunch of FAQ questions that we've received from several LEAs throughout our state on various things, on is this considered part of this program? Can I use my money for this? We have answered those, and this is a live document that continues to get updated as we receive new questions. So refer to this if you have specific questions regarding this program. Just a couple of things, you can go back to the presentation, Brett, thank you. You can only use your allocation for salary and benefits of hiring qualified personnel or procuring a contract for related services for those qualified personnel. And so qualified personnel include... It's a school counselor or another counselor, a school psychologist or other psychologist, a school social worker or other social worker, or a school nurse. They licensed, and they have to collaborate with educators and students' parents on a number of things. Early identification and intervention of students' academic and mental health needs, and removing barriers to learning and developing skills and behaviors critical for the student's academic achievement. So that's what a qualified personnel, or you can contract with your county mental health institution in order to provide those services for your LEA. Both of those are allowable under this funding source, but do remember it's a dollar-for-dollar match. This program is allocated that once your plan is approved, 25% of your allocation will be sent to you, and then when you demonstrate that you've hired those qualified people, 75, the remaining 75% will get allocated to your LEA. And then that bottom link is the link to where all that information is for the application and the FAQ information for this grant. Any questions on this program? Awesome. Okay, so also coming out of the session, USBE got, gets the opportunity to do several summer work groups. One of them is local replacement, and basically what we have to do is figure out, as districts know, there's a two-year, and charter schools know, there's a two-year lag in information. So for fiscal year 2020's local replacement calculation, we are using actual fiscal year 18 information. So school districts, actual collections off of their voted levy, their board, their capital, debt service levies, any of their board exclusions that are allowable through code, any of their capital, any of their state guaranteed funds off of the same program, so voted board capital. We're using actual LEA ADM from 18, because that's the latest one I have, and actual charter school district of residence, which is also from fiscal year 18. What the legislature wants us to do is to come up with a method to eliminate the one-year lag or a two-year lag for this calculation, which means that all of those data sources in the middle of that would have to be estimated somehow, some way. So we are instructed to work with the governor's office and the legislative fiscal analyst's office to come up with a methodology to eliminate the one-year and two-year lag. We need to report that back by October 31st to the Public Education Subcommittee, and then I'm assuming, based on recommendations, they will probably run a bill or run it through their committees in that next upcoming session. Any questions on local replacement?
Question, is it a one-to-one match or 50% now?
It's one dollar to dollar, one-to-one on HB 373. Any questions on local replacement? All right, the board, we've also had a board request to look at teacher supplies and materials, so we're also doing a work group for teacher supplies and materials. We're looking for two USBE board members, two business administrators from the school districts and charter schools. We're looking for a school district superintendent and a charter school director. We're looking for two classroom educators who receive the payments in different ways. I know that depending on LEAs, they sometimes load a, like a purchasing card for your teachers to go out and buy their supplies. Some of them are, show me your receipts and I'll reimburse you. There's various ways that this money is actually getting back to the individual educators. They want us to look at that process and come back with maybe a uniform methodology to distribute that money faster, better for LEAs. So this work group is coming in May, which is now.
Comment on that?
Uh huh.
This isn't totally funded, the amount they put this to distribute.
Right.
So we know exactly how much we're going to get. It would be impossible for us to fund it before we know how much exactly we're going to get.
All good points, work during this working group because yes, it is very difficult when it's an estimate, and yeah, you don't know. So if you want to be a member, please, if you would like to participate in this work group, please send those inquiries to Scott Jones. He is the one that's going to be spearheading this particular work group. Any questions on teacher supply of materials? Also, the legislature also put in intent language for per pupil expenditures operations, which means that the USBE, in conjunction with all of you, have to report on per pupil expenditures for operations for fiscal year 19. We have to report this to the LFA, or to the Public Education Subcommittee by January 31st of 2020. And I know Brett is going to, Brett or his team is going to talk a little bit more about per pupil expenditure where we are with them, but just know that it is required to report information by January 31st to the legislature. And the last thing that I have is assurances. So in the past, we have been doing a fillable PDF form for your assurances for your charter school director or your school district superintendents. We will do that again this year. We were unable to get that into the Utah Grant System this year, so within the next few days, I will be sending out the events form to all your directors and superintendents. They will need, they can print that out, they can give it to whoever needs to respond to that, but they need to be the one that certifies that with their sticker on it and send back through the fillable PDF. All those responses will be catalogued in one big sheet that we'll send out to the rest of the sections in the building, and if they, if anyone in the building has an issue with one of your responses, they will contact you and follow up with those. Know that those are due July 1st of 2019, so in order to do any federal reimbursement, we have to have that you are substantially complete, meaning that you have assured to all of the federal assurances in our assurance document, which is why we require that you have it back to us by July 1st. Any questions on the assurance form? Awesome. Anybody have any questions for me in general?
Good job.
No, perfect. Who, who's next up? We're just going to fly. Tammy? All right, we will hand it over to Tammy, who's going to cover school fees.
Yeah, we got, well, I have 100 copies today. If you don't get one and want a paper copy, me and note, this is the same one that's been handed out in UASV, well, we've changed it since the UASV conference, but this was at the charter school conference, it's at a couple other meetings I've been at since then. Been on a whirlwind, I guess, with things. So that, there's, so if you have, and it's also available on our website to download. I hear there's some problems with the download. We're trying to get that fixed, should have fixed by tomorrow to do a print from the downloads. It was my bad, I think I put it, you know, when I'd saved the PDF, I did click that you could print it, so anyway. What I, this is not a, you know, ideal setup, but oh, well. So how many have heard me talk before? Probably more than half of you. Not as many as I thought, okay. Or you're just denying school fees ever exist and we have issues with it. But what I wanted to talk about, and I'm going to give, cherry limey looks good, but I'll let you have it. That really helps, thanks, Jamie, thanks. Okay, so what we have here is... I think my left hand put that on the wrong side, so I apologize. Put on the right, the other side, right side. Okay. What we have here, school fees, as you all may know, is, you know, been around for a little bit. You know, they, and, okay. Clicker instructions, okay, got it, got it. This is just a slide that gives a big background. I apologize, for some of you, this is going to be a huge repeat because we've gone through this other ways, but basically, in 1994, there was a court case, and that court case said, Utah, you're not doing it right. You have this constitution talks about, and I'm going to go one more slide, I'll come back, you have in your law, and you have in your constitution, that the public policy of this state, that the public education shall be free. Now that's from the current House Bill 250, they went through legislative session. Different versions of that is in the constitution and also has been the legislator for... Different versions of that is in the constitution and also has been the legislator for eons. I mean, the court case goes back into the 1800s. And that is on our website, if you're interested. It's an interesting read. And so that is the crux of this, is that 30 years ago, we had this, but you may have realized that there was some uptick in fees. There was an internal audit performed by the USBE. 2017, they wanted to run a bill about school fees, and says, "No, let's go out and figure out what's really going on." Internal audit, are from our office, Kevin John. I'm actually with the internal audit team, but I have been, I'm consulting now with the admin team to head up the project of the school fees, and this is probably a two- or three-year assignment. Happy to be there. I, it's, I was not part of the school fees initial audit. I was there, I knew what was going on, but I was doing my other audits on Cactus and some other things. And so when it came down to, they wanted to do this, they wanted to have a person, personnel inside the USBE to do this. And so they says, "Well, who knows the most about this?" It's internal audit, they just did an audit on it. And so, anyway, I don't, don't know, pretend why my name came to the top to do this project. I do have a background, and I also have another job for years on City Council, on Let's Cross. I'm a CPA, I also served public manager, it was a little fun to go and get that. So I think I hopefully have a broader understanding than most of what maybe some of the challenges that your local boards are handling, and what they're trying to deal with here. But in that, in those two audits, it came up a huge uptick in the amount of fees, but not really an uptick in the waivers. And so there was a, there's a process that we needed to look a little and be a little more in line with some of this court order that was out there, was a permanent injunction, which never goes away. Of course, the judge is dead, the people that did the prosecution are all gone. So, you know, there's lots of issues, they're talking, the lawyers love to talk about things, but anyway. So we go through this, anyway, we go through, we do a house bill, the USBE does a task force, they get a bunch of people on board, what should we do, how should we address this? And that's primarily what you saw in the changes in the rule 407 that came about last, that was finally put into action about, they presented to the board in December, finally was approved about February of this year. In the interim, July, OLEC comes out with a little different audit on school fees, one a little more, a deeper dive, not such a broad dive, but a deeper dive in specific schools, which some of you are part of, lucky you guys. And so, and then we go, so we're at now, we, the board supported the House Bill 250, which is in large part, a great deal like the rule 407 that was passed, but there were some changes, differences that we'll, that we'll have to address, and we are going to address in the morning, the end of summer, to make some changes to the rule. And I'll emphasize those as I go through the slides here. And so this, basically what happens is, we got, we already have rules and laws and code on the book related to school fees. The new rule clarified that, made some tweaks here and there, and the law also did the same. But the school fees has been around and is part of what we, what we are, and I've spent way too much time on that history, which you all are immensely familiar with, probably. So, so we're trying to get to that context. So what is a fee? And this is some things that were brought in the audit, that, you know, there was a lot of picking and choosing what was a fee and what wasn't a fee. And it's like, anytime you ask a kid to provide a student, and I apologize, I have not been with education that long, I am learning my binocular, so, student, I'll try to say that. But anytime a student is requested to, or his parents, to provide money, goods, and service, that is a fee. And that can even be required fundraising, as we can talk about and stuff. So anytime, and so that's why the estimates probably in the, both audits were based upon information gathered from you all folks, that you are part of these audits. Probably why I understand, because this understanding of what a fee is, wasn't large, is not consistent throughout all the A's, and it probably was understating in other areas. And so there are things that we, we've asked of the kids, goods, and monies, and services that have not been counted in the past. So the fee includes anything you request of a student. Now, this is something that's come about because of the new house bill and also the new rule, is individual fundraising, that, okay, you want some help, you don't have the money to pay the fees to go on these trips, or to be part of band, or, or what have you, or participate in the CTE course, or whatever, then here, here's some money that you can go fundraise, and you, whatever money you earn, we're going to help you provide services. That's done away with. There was a lot of, we go into the policymaking of that, but largely, they determined that, hey, it's really not fair, because a kid that socioeconomic circumstances don't allow to have that money, he probably doesn't have the rich uncles and aunts, neighbors and friends to fundraise at a, in a efficient manner. And it might take him a lot more time and effort, which is how, you know, then, anyway. So that's why the individual fundraising, this is, these came out of the task force that they set up. Changes are, and also expenditures for field trips, including transportation, food, lodging, admission, and charges, all these things, all these activities, payments to a third party. Not a lot of deep dive yet on this, but this probably is a probably one of the more far-reaching, and it's going to be the most difficult to get our arms around, is how do we know? Some of you have set up, you know, like for band, you can go rent to the local Summer Haze, or the Boundless Music, or whatever. You've set these things up, or you have musical instruments that you have, or, so we've got to start thinking in these terms, and I know that a lot of the charters, some I've been involved with, they will, you know, they have vendors that provide activities, the student events, and so forth. And so the student is actually paying, you know, directly into that vendor, rather than the money within the school, is, the school is coordinating. So we have to think also about those third-party payments that are being made for the child, for the student to actively or fully participate in the school-sponsored event and activity. And, and I want to talk about this, I somehow have lost my slide on this, and, but what is, yeah, school activity is sponsored by, or supported, these are types of terms, they use the both in the rule and the code to describe what type activities you're talking about. Talk about curricular, non-curricular clubs, extracurricular, anything that you put your brand on. Anything that says, you know, ABC High School, anything that says so-and-so Elementary School. Anything you put your brand on, you need to think that you have ownership of that. And that is probably the, one of the first criteria to look at, to think, well, am I supporting this, am I sponsoring this? Now, as the schools are thinking, they're going to have to be thinking, there's different rules on curricular, non-curricular clubs, and, and other, and I know there's a lot of community-based efforts that kind of work with the schools. And, and hopefully, by the end of the month, I'll have a white paper out on this, I don't have a policy out yet, but the white paper as to describing those relationships. Are they truly arm's length? Because if they're not arm's length, then they're, they're a school fee. And I'm going to talk about school fee as defined in 407, meaning the school fee, and if anything that's a fee is waivable, or that if a student meets certain criteria and he is eligible, there must be waived. So anyway, I'm going to step back now, talk a little bit of how these fees come about. And I'm happy to take questions if you'd like, or, or I'll pause a few times during the presentation we can, we do, because anybody have any thoughts now? Now, it's just been background, so, all right. Anyway, so anything that's a fee, travel expenditures, this is something that came up that perhaps in the audits wasn't being counted. If a student, even if he jumps on the bus to go to the football game as extracurricular, but they're, you know, such a long drive that, you know, you're past your five hours, I don't know, whatever, four hours, and the kid needs a meal, those things are student fees. The travel, the fee to get on the bus. Now, the fee to get on the bus to come to school for charters, that is not a school fee, because it's been excluded in the charters, not rule 407, but it's excluded in other rules and so forth. So we can talk about those a little bit, too. Okay. Okay, so what do you have to do with these fees? They have to be authorized, they have to be noticed. That means the governing board. And I want to clarify, to Jamie's point also, governing board, that's not your community council, that's not for the CITL funds and these other boards or advisory, this is your, the governing board. For charter, they're not specifically elected, usually the districts, all the A's are elected, so it is the governing board of the, of the LEA. And, what does mean, you notice, this change, this change has come about, this new. And that's, there has to be two opportunities for public input. And so we do get some concerns once in a while, that have a public notice, you have to allow the public to participate. This is always fun. I have to do train public meetings, I think I have to do an hour every year to be on the council. And it's just fun to think of what everybody thinks about what is public, a public meeting, and how long, or how much, have to let someone say something, there's all sorts of fun rules. But anyway, allow the people to participate, allow the people to give me their thoughts. And find notes for the parents and students. Now, the notice has always been there, and we still have on our website, the old notices and stuff, we'll be revamping this as we go forward. But if you're 20% of your students gets particular language, you have to also put the notice in that language, okay? And if not, then you have to meet one-on-one, give them those, those assurances. So this, this has to be understood by any student that signs up for an activity, a course, a classwork, a curricular, you know, and even some non-curricular, that they need to know what the fees are and understand that. Take minutes in the meetings, so it's all part of what's done. So, so that's, two, two notice public input. One can be the time when you actually vote on it, but I'm sure you have public input before you do the vote, okay? Any questions on that part of it? And this is, and this is what hit some also with those, your CPA firms are reviewing, you know, that's part of it, the agreed-upon procedures and the state's compliance guide. When I went through those, looking for things that they were looking to say, hey, you got to change this, you got to, you know, things need to be done better on these things, I'm like, I read through that, and I'm like, no, everything's there, it's general, like this audit plan should be, we don't want to dictate and leave the judgment to the, to the, your CPAs and their reviewing, of course. Be mindful that these things are still there, and then there will probably be a little more attention paid to those details. It's a little hanging fruit for an auditor. Okay, so what used to be a, how did it notice? Ah, on the fee schedule, this is the fun one. Okay, we need to have a specific amount, does that mean percentage? Can we do a percentage? Can we do something? No, we've been talking back, went back, listened to some of the minutes, on the legislative minutes and so forth, a dollar amount. So it needs to be a dollar amount, up to X amount, as all things government, never go over your budget, but up to, they're okay, but, you know, be mindful of that. And a maximum amount for each activity. So that's what that up to means. Max total amount per student. Now, the injunction said, the state board should have set this across the state as a maximum amount. And they, they punted, they gave that to you guys, as the LEAs. But as the LEA, you'll need to set as an LEA, not per school, but as an LEA, you'll need to have a maximum amount. And all sorts of, you're talking current enrollment, how are you going to know that for a student that comes and is part-time with you guys, part of the charter? All sorts of fun things to think about later. A clear and delineation. Now, in the packet I handed out, I've got about 10 categories, of general categories of a delineation we're thinking about on the spend plan. But you do have to be specific, you got to let the parents know, is this travel, is this food, is this for equipment, is this is for supplies? You've got to let them know what they're buying with their fee amount. And, okay, and then you still have to have the fee waiver policies, and then the spending plan, which we'll get into a little bit more. Okay, project-based courses, this has been huge, because project-based courses, right now in the rule, and in the injunction, and in the House Bill 250, say that the project-based, that project requires, for graduation or credit for that course, should be free, and to all students. So that causes all sorts of consternations across the board. And then the second part of that is, if a kid wants to do a discretionary, say you say, for the private course, you know, wood shop, it's easy, let's build a bookcase. Oh no, I want to build a nightstand. So the bookcase, anything for that has to be free, but if he wants to build a nightstand, then he's, that's an additional discretionary project, you can charge for materials and fees and so forth, avoiding, and also, you want to also avoid, and this, you got to go back to a free and appropriate opportunity for all the students, that if all the kids that are doing discretionary projects, they're building, you know, their armoire to go in, you know, the, you know, the living room, and, oh, you get a fee waiver, though you're doing the standard project, here's a bunch of bookcases over here, that is to be discouraged, okay? Try not to figure out ways that you don't, you're not bringing attention or identifying students in socioeconomic situations, that they cannot afford to complete the coursework, or complete, or that there is some stigma to that, even though they only have to do the bookcase to get the grade, everybody else is doing their armoire, there's a problem, okay? So if there's a division line strictly between the two groups, then there's, there's a problem.
In relation to that, do they have to be able to take the project home?
Now...
So if they're building a bookcase, we have a school that keeps all the bookcases themselves on the fee, for example?
Jamie, will you make sure you kind of repeat the question, you feel it's a little deep online here?
Thank you. All right, I got to repeat that question, and this question's come up, so what if the student takes the project home, or are they allowed to take? That is, that is a local decision, but I like that idea. I like the idea that, okay, everybody builds a bookcase, we'll put them together and we'll sell them. And then we put that money back in, as a group fundraiser, if you will, back into that, to that program, so that we can offset some of the fees and so forth. I like that idea. But ownership of the project after, does not, you have, it needs to be consistent with the student. So if you decide to do that, all students have to make bookcase, students have to, you know, and they can choose to buy their own, as fundraisers, but, but I think that that, but that just has to be, everybody is saying, fair, if it's a silent auction, or whatever, yeah, I want my kids' bookcase, not this other kid's. Yeah, you, you can work through those, those things. But just make sure that to get the grade, there's not that identification and split. And there's another question over here? Or, no? Okay. Okay. We are looking, this has been the biggest consternation, as I've been out talking to people, is on these project-related courses. It does come out of the injunction, House Bill addressed it, but we're looking, now, when you're thinking about, so we're seeking clarification, because it says you still can charge a fee for the class, but not for the project, okay? So we want to make sure that we were capturing the intent and the spirit of everything. So we're looking at identifying instructional supplies that can be charged for the class. But you got to be able to identify what those supplies are going to be, is for the glue, the sandpaper, the saw blades that everybody uses, that's not particular to that project. And then, but we were looking to clarify this probably by the end of summer, and I will get my work group going, I, you know, Jamie's much faster, easier, more experienced at this, but I will get my work group going now for the next two or three months, so we can identify some of these questions and clarify this. And so, the, we're talking instructional supplies, we're talking instructional equipment, the thought right now is kind of turning, that if the student owns the equipment, then you can charge a fee for it, but anything you charge a fee for, you have to be able to waive. So that's the barber chairs, that's the mechanics tools, you have a toolkit, might be the art brushes, or our brush is supplied. That's what our work group is going to try to identify, but kind of conceptually is coming down, that anything that, equipment, now, when you think of equipment, this can be supplies. When you're thinking your accounting, in your accounting terms, when you, the chart of accounts, the definition, well, I'm saying equipment, I'm not, it's not the over 5,000 stuff. This is what you probably would look into your supplies account, and we'll look to get those definitions made, and then we'll look to make changes, whatever ripple that is throughout the chart of accounts. But anyway, so instructional equipment, is it student-owned, is it the barber chairs, that they want, they want to have the scissors, or is it something you rent to them? But again, a rental would be a fee, and you'd have, and those who are eligible, you'd want to do a waiver. School-owned, that would be some charge, you like the three-year, those saws run out in three years, or the, you know, you know, I don't know what there is in the shop. I did do welding, I did do welding, I did a nice fruit basket, but the welder, you know, we had the little, the rods and the so forth, and the gas, that's all supplied. So we'll have to think through these things. So we'll have to think through all these things. Uh, so but the thought is if a student owns, you charge a fee. If a school owns, that there's not a fee for it. That's a, um, a term we, uh, durable good from like one to five years. Some sort of durable good in equipment there. And then, of course, when we get to instructional materials that you have for all the CT courses and so forth, but you also have your Chrome Pad, your iPad. You have the Wi-Fi network that depreciates, you know, you have to replace in a few years. Uh, your support, the workbooks, and I apologize for the question mark the wrong place. The software, the Wi-Fi. If you're requiring a student to have an iPad or so, do his homework, but he doesn't have Wi-Fi at home, how is he supposed to do that? We're looking at those instructional materials and those textbooks. Now, in 2023, the thought is anything in that category would be free. You cannot charge a fee for it, and it'll have to be provided to the student. So as I work with the work group, we'll kind of answer some of these questions. But this is kind of the general direction and thought process that came out of the task force and some ideas that are being floated around now. Okay, at this point, are, are there more questions online or? Okay, right here.
We're a Title I school, so we don't charge any fees, but we do require parent volunteer hours. Is that under that definition?
Yes, that is a fee.
Jamie, would we restate that?
Oh, we say that, okay. The question was if, if we don't have fees, law charges, law schools don't. They don't have fees, they'll have, they require all hours to volunteer at the school and help out. That, those hours are also, are, would be considered a fee. And that group fundraising or fundraising or whatever the required hours. You can still do individual fundraising, you can still do group fundraising, and it's actually in the packet, it goes a lot more detail. So individual fundraising has to be voluntary. You can't instigate it. The child, the student has, or parent has to come to you. Isn't there any way we can, we don't want to just waiver this, we want to work for this. But you can't instigate that. The student has to come and volunteer to be the individual. And you can set that up and work with them on that. Now, but on the group fundraisers, everything that's earned has to be defer the cost of the activity, the pro, the, the, the course, or whatever. Whatever you set that fee up, that program you set that fee up to be, the group funds and the group fundraiser has to defer across the board. Everybody share in that. And then participation is not a criteria. Okay, right here.
So am I understanding you correctly that we provide an opportunity for individual students to do fundraising for their individual fees? That any fundraising has to be applied to every student? Every student does have to participate in fundraising?
On the group fundraising, yes. On the individual, you can still do.
Do they provide the opportunities that they have to initiate?
They have to come and ask you, I really want to, do you have something like, how can I earn some money to do this? And then that's an individual. But say, oh, we're going to have this car wash, or we, every year you have a bake stall. Or, I mean, something pretty elaborate that I've heard about. You know, you go out and you'll have a hopeful day, a carnival. I mean, we in our city, we have a carnival for the PTA every year. That's on the city property, that, uh, proceeds go to the, the school. So that's a group fundraiser.
So what if it's an individual, the school provides the opportunity? If you like to do fundraising, to be pretty workies, you sell, you can sell candy bars. So each student sells their own candy bars, but we've initiated that process. They didn't just come to the school to ask for it, we've initiated it as an opportunity. Does that still have to be spread across?
No, no, not on the, but you got to be really careful.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, you got to be really careful with the candy bars and so forth because you have to give them credit for time and effort. If a kid goes out for 10 hours and doesn't sell one candy bar, you've got to give him what they call a good faith effort. You've got to give them credit or money or funds or a waiver for that effort. So if they don't, you say, okay, we got to have $100. You got to, you can't say you got to go out and get a hundred dollars cash. You've got to, you've got also, that's some details in this, in the individual, and that's in the injunction, is that you have to give them credit. Or if, I don't want you to call it not credit, but apply or decrease the fees for the amount of time that their effort that they give it.
We have to track, have them track.
Yeah, that's, it gets very somewhat, now, I got to repeat this question. The question was if you provide an individual fundraising opportunity, make sure they come to you and ask, you cannot install appointments. They've got to come in and ask for it. So anyway, you can identify that or something, they've got to come in and instigate that. So that, yes, you don't want to, it's, this is spelled out a lot in the court order, which if you want to read through it, it's on the website. But it's just, you don't want to identify those students in any way. And that they provide that, that opportunity. So I don't set the policy, we're trying to implement it. But these are some criteria we're going to lay out and, and are thought through on, on the group. Okay, did I, did I cover that okay for the online? Okay.
Okay, so on this, it's saying something very different than what we've heard from some state board members upon. Is it saying that you can't have a mandatory group fundraiser? And this was brought up during legislative session, and we were told, no, 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 that's wrong. You can, um, have mandatory group fundraisers. JROTC, part of, being part of JROTC is that you're going to participate in their fundraisers. Otherwise, you're not part of JROTC. There's a lot of programs that are that way. It's part of their civics education and so forth, is that they all work together and do things like that. But on here, it's saying you can't require a person to participate in a group fundraiser. It's very different than everything we've heard.
Yeah, I think, I think the idea that came out of the work group was that if they are, if you have a requirement of so many hours in group fundraising, you need to be able to allow opportunity is because those who weren't able to participate fully in that group fundraising and spend those hours also probably have an after-school job, or they have something else. Or they have things at home that they need to attend to or something. I, we can't, I mean, I'm not a social worker. I've worked with a few social workers, but we can't get into that. So the policy that there's coming down, is being set, is that a group fundraiser has to be equally towards that. That's, group fundraising is for the program, not for the individual students. So if you get the group fundraising money, that decreases the fee for everybody else, and you need to include that amount of money on the spend plan.
Yeah, I'm not going to have that portion. I'm talking about, here it's saying, on your paper you handed out, that you can't have mandatory group fundraising. That if a kid just says, nope, I'm not going to go.
An individual cannot be mandated to participate in the group fundraising.
Correct, and we've been told in the past that they can.
Well, I think there, and this is a fine line that I'm not sure that I'm going to, and we'll get some policies on it, and we'll get some things written out there. But the reality, we're trying not to isolate that student as have, if he is unable to make that commitment, you know, but he wants to participate fully, that the group fundraising fees are decreasing the cost of that activity for everyone, including those that cannot fully participate.
Well, I, I, the thing is, you keep saying they want to participate fully. But if the fundraisers are part of participating fully to say, oh, I want to go do the fun part, but I don't want to do the work part, is not participating fully. Seems like you're splitting hairs and saying, if somehow there's money involved in this, then that doesn't count towards the participating fully for the kid, because that's work. But they get all the fun that goes along with the activity.
Okay, and I think you can be creative enough and come up with the best ways for that kid, that student's circumstances to allow him other opportunities or options to participate fully in that. So, and, and I don't know that I'm going to come from the state and say that this is, you know, we're going to split those hairs for you. But I do know that that can't, that whatever, and I'm repeating myself, I apologize. But, so that's, that's how we're coming down with this. And so you will need to be a little creative in how that student participates in it.
We need to talk to our board members about now.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, we got another question back here.
Okay, I'm a baseball coach. We sell banners. I tell all the kids, you need to sell three banners out to, out to the community as part of baseball. Explain to me if that, if I can do that, and how that's reported on the fee waivers.
Okay, so the money, the revenue you're getting from the banners needs to be, okay, here's the.
It's sponsorship.
It's a sponsorship, yeah.
I assign every kid, you go, everybody needs to go sell three banners.
Right.
Is that a group or an individual money?
That's a group fundraiser. It has to be treated as a group fundraiser. And so, because you're.
It doesn't necessarily have to be we're all together to do it.
No, you can go out individually.
Same assignment.
Yeah.
And then that's accounted for as part of the fees.
Right, so you'll have a fee for, you know, the athletic gear or whatever. And then you come down here and you say, okay, this much, this is being required on a, for per student, but not individually, per student. This amount as additionally, those three, which would be what, $100 each or $1,000 each? Let's say $1,000, a couple hundred dollars.
I can't take that off that student's individual fee.
No, it has to go to.
But I have to throw, I have to throw in the pot.
Right, now, I did get a fee schedule, I apologize. It's probably from, from, I think, one of the Jordans, one of the Jordans. Anyway, and I wrote back and says, okay, you, so you identify up here what that student's going to take out of their pocket and pay. And that's on an individual basis, and it's going to be used for this, you know, what, here's all the fees, the math, whatever, and here's what all are going to be used for. I mean, I'm, I'm a matrix person, I like seeing this, you know, as a table. But then on the bottom, you're going to say, okay, also, we're going to have group fundraising. And that's going to go towards, you know, paying for, I think the one of them said football, the pads. I guess you, the helmets, you change out the pads, you might use, reuse a helmet, but you change out the pads. Well, helmet pads, we're going to group fundraise for that. We're going to group fundraise for the knee pads. We're going to group fundraise for the new uniforms. That on a per, um, student basis needs to be delineated. But we've got to have a total, so that total group fundraising goes to eliminate, defer the cost of the entire program. Okay. Thanks, Jamie.
Yeah, one more question on that. So if the group, can we still take parent donations that help cover our fee waiver kids, number one? And number two, in his examples, they're all selling three, and I have 10 kids sell 20. Can we use that money to help cover our fee waiver kids?
Okay, you can't, okay, I didn't finish up the question here, I need to finish, okay, two questions there. If a kid doesn't able to sell his three, doesn't come back, doesn't, hasn't done his three, but he went out for so many hours and worked and asked, I mean, in, in days in my banking, we used to, you know, he had to make 100 cold calls to get one call to answer the door. If he went out and made those 100 cold calls, then you need to give him effort for that, even though he didn't actually sell the sponsor or the thing. So you have to give, you have to give credit for effort and time spent. And let me come back to that, because I don't think very fast, and so I got to answer this one now. And so on, and your question was that if there's a, um, what was your, repeat your question for me.
Couple things. One, are we still good on taking donations that can be used to cover?
Yes, just don't.
And two, if the other students surpass their goal, can we use those funds to help cover the fee waivers?
Okay, all right. When we get down the line on this for a couple of years, and we've got a timeline spelled out here, there is a point, and I think it's the 22, 21, 22 school year, 22, 23 school year, that each fee has, you cannot charge a fee more than the cost of that program. So you've got to be very careful that you cannot charge a higher fee to these students that can afford it to cover. So the waivers, the student waivers.
It's just fundraising.
Yeah, yeah, so just a fee raising.
Everybody raised funds.
Yes, and that's, and that's why you have a group fundraiser up here, that it decreases the, the cost or the fee required for the entire group. So, okay. Is that it?
I think you said parents may donate. So two ways that's.
Yeah.
Now, are we still trips of parents donating for interest fees? Are we still good at that? And then in the instance where they're donating for students to be able to go on insurance?
Now, donations, we kind of cross over to some of the Rule 113, which is the accounting rule. Those rules still apply, and you want to ensure that you're not, yeah, so donations, you can still take money. We're not going to, we're not going to say that, but it must be for that program. You've got to be, what we got to come down to is we're doing some very by-program identification of costs in the revenue streams. Okay, what, here?
So I'm feeling like we're flip-flopping back and forth on several lines. But there's one thing in the board rule. It says that only individual fundraising uses to be included as part of the maximum fee, not group fundraising. So you've gone back and forth on that. So the group fundraising can be used for fees, but according to the rule, it says you have to set a maximum fee for activity, a maximum fee for student. And the individual fundraising is included in that, not the group.
Okay.
But that's in the rule.
Right, okay, so, but what I, and you're right, and I apologize if I'm flip-flopping. I'm kind of new into this, and we'll go back and forth, and I'll, I hope not to do that too often. But what I want to do is when I come back, and we're doing a monitoring of this, and we won't start for a few years, but I've got to be able to see that this program, the revenue source was here, and the individual amount spent on that program is X, okay? The total program, and this is going to get back, this is going to get into, as we get into the work groups, of the cost, the activity-based costing and so forth, that some of this is related to. But we got to see the full picture. Here's the revenue stream, here's the cost. And I got to, and I have to be able to ensure that the fee charged to the individual students didn't exceed the cost of that expense. But most cases not. It's only going to be one tenth or one fifth. It's going to be very little. But in order to make that assurance, I've got to be able to see the entire revenue streams.
And that's true, when you're looking at it and saying.
But on the spend plan, you're right, you don't.
The spending time you're paid, you're only putting plans for what you can.
But if, if, on the spend plan, if you are requiring a group fundraiser and a people spend X amount of effort to do the group fundraising, upfront, that parent's got to realize that when I have a kid in the swim team, I'm going to be expected to do this group fundraiser on May 12th. We're going to do a car wash this day, we're going to do this. So they know upfront, before they send the kid out for that class, I'm going to have to, like, you know, these Saturdays, these after-school, to be, be, and to help with that group fundraising.
But that's not the case a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
They're required to do it, the staff will do it.
Yeah.
So those, those balances are very hard to, to do some of those expenditures over a long period of time. So when you're saying that those revenues can't exceed the expenditures, we're going to have to at some point do those long-term replacements.
Now.
Are you personally?
On the, yeah, so on the individual, and this is a discussion, probably get to this. What if you fundraise more, or you collect more fees? Or the kids, not enough kids, you know, actually make it to nationals, so we don't do the national trip? Or the kid gets sick and he doesn't go, do I have to give the fee back to him? Well, that needs to be in your own policies and rules. And I think that we know with any estimate or any, you know, forecasting, you're not going to hit it right on. But you don't want to underball it, because you know you can't, you don't want to have to make the money up somewhere else. We will probably look for a way, and this is not in the rule yet. This is what the work group will decide, what do we do with those excess funds that are fees that we fundraised or we collected for a certain program? And, you know, and, and many concepts, if you over-collect, you, your reserves, you can use that for the, you know, next, in that program for the next few years. But there's going to be a cap or limit on how much you can carry over. So it'll probably be similar in that type of regards.
So who would determine the cap for each of the programs?
Our work group is, not a cap, your, your board should be determining the cap for each fee.
I'm not talking about the balance carryover. Who's going to determine what's necessary for each program?
I think that general guidelines is 5%. Like, we have, in our municipal budget, we are required, we can't, capital funds, we can't, more than 5% carry over year to year for the city.
5% is the amount for what?
That, that's, that's the general guideline. That's not necessarily what we've got going yet, because I got to work with Jamie, I got to work with Scott. I've got to work with a lot, our work group to determine, well, what do we want to do? We've been asked all these questions from now, what, what parameters do we want? What are we going to set at the USB level? What are we going to allow the LEAs to determine? But we've got to generally be in harmony with other programs and other statutes and so forth that look at when you collect too much money, what do you do with it? So, yeah, but yeah.
I can no longer add many questions.
You have many questions, yes. Okay, microns coming, and I've not been very good at repeating questions, so.
I wouldn't do a wake-up.
Just two seconds.
Wait one second, I'll come back. So I can no longer ask for volunteers?
You can ask, you can ask. I mean, that, no nation isn't asking for volunteers. You can do that. Just, just make sure that they know from their, you know, yeah.
But I think, it seems to me this is like micromanaging. It's like, there was not that. It's like they're not that much, I don't know.
Yeah.
So we, I, I think it's just like we, we already tried to do the best we can with a little bit of that. This just seems completely over the top.
Well, and, and I hope we don't, and I, if I, we're to that point now, probably, we need to look on it. Because what, what is happening is we need, we need to, you know, look at the other stakeholders. You guys are a huge stakeholder, the parents, the teachers, the student. We've all gotta come together and decide what's appropriate and cost.
This is what we do already.
Yeah.
We tell the parents what it is we're charging them for. If they can't afford it, we say, we are not gonna make you pay, because your child is entitled to education. So we give you fee waivers. So that means that other parents are obviously helping the people who cannot afford it pay for stuff that we do in order to have education. It, it just seems to me overkill beyond overkill.
Yeah. And I think, and I, and, you know, and I think, and why does, why, why do we come, why does the legislators, you know, get up and say, we gotta come down on this, we gotta, they have complaints, they've had, you know, so I, I'm not setting the policy, I'm not, oh, we're covering up the microphone. I'm not setting the policy. We're just trying to implement where we're going. And I wanna be able to get enough input and great input from you guys to figure out what, what is the best course. Because we, and if it's micromanaging by the time we're done, you know, we spend a lot of time, the city complains what they do, but in, so they're used to it. So, but I think there's, there's a lot of things, and I say this, in, 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 there's always regulations. And I, I don't wanna convince you guys, or any other, I'm not. But just let you know, I'm here. I hope I'm the avenue for you guys to get her. But also, but at the end of the line, also an avenue, okay, let's figure out the best way to do this. Okay, I got one right here and then one in the back and
Use the mic, because I think I talked about
Okay.
Everything you're saying is okay until you got, says, you need to determine what your balances are and how much we you know, the state office is gonna tell us, or the state board, what balances we can carry forward if we collect too much. And I'm saying, that makes no sense. You shouldn't have any kind of, uh, skin in the game on that. A principal of a high school knows that a basketball team raises a lot more money and football raises a lot more money than soccer or volleyball. And so at the end of the year, or at the end of two years, they spread it out amongst the different sports. If you don't have principals sitting on your committee, on your interim committee, that you've got working on that, then that's a mistake. Because a principal really knows how that, that works.
Yeah. And, and I appreciate the thought. I'm, uh, well, I'm sure we do. I've got, you know, business administrators, superintendents, principals. The only group I've reached out to is actual teachers or coaches, but that's probably something we need to reach out to and get that collective, wrangle a few of those in too. Anything else? Any other comments? Okay, one way in the back.
So if you have programs that there is no requirement for parents to pay for the students to participate, and it's truly a donation, and if there's not enough money, we're funding the program, that's not a fee, but you're stating this, that the expenses would still be considered a fee anyway. So how does that match up revenue with expenses as a fee?
I'm somewhat lost in the question there, because a fee is to pay for the expenses. You're collecting part of the, what you consider expense for the program. I'm gonna call it the program, because we're gonna use program codes.
But if, if it's not a requirement for the parents to pay for their student to participate, it's not, there's no obligation, they're not required to do it, but the student still is able to participate, we're just funding the program through our regular funding. But you're stating here that we need to report those expenses as fees. So you're, so we won't necessarily have revenue that is going to offset what you say are fee expenses.
We're just starting down a path here. It's gonna take us three or four years to implement. But the reality is, we've got to put a work group together to talk about activity-based costing of these expenses. And so that in itself, and the spend plan is just way out on the front of that, trying to identify, okay, let's just take that part of the revenue that we're collecting from the other students' pockets and other parents and identify what we're gonna use that for. But the reality is, we get down the road three or four years here, it's been requested, and it's part of the legislation, that there be some activity-based costing. We identify the cost of running these programs, you know, and part of that. And when I'm in there monitoring the program, if I, okay, here's all the expenses, I'm like, okay, how do they, you know, I, that's just part of understanding what's, what's happening and having the assurance of what is, what is doing there, is be able to balance that between the revenue source and the, the expense source. I mean, I, I'm new to governmental accounting. I've been on the private side for years. And yeah, you guys confused the heck out of me with the front accounting and the moving and the transferring based upon budgets. And I, I got something I need to learn and I need better at.
It's already, it's already
Yeah. So, yeah. So, you know, we'll need to get into that. But so that's, and I've skipped through a lot here. I've got plenty of time and I'm not sure, you're, let me look through here. Fundraising, we talked a little bit of school clothing, school activity clothing, school uniforms. Okay, talk about textbooks. Will be fine with me. Just no 20, 2023, no fees for textbooks in any secondary or elementary. That's currently on the books. So we gotta get to the point somehow. Uh, school uniforms. If you're gonna purchase whatever the kids got there at a Walmart, Target, or whatever else, it's probably not prescriptive. By the time they have to, it's got a logo, it's got a something on it that says, this school. Now, I'm, I'm, we're toying around and I've, there's like a T-shirt has just a print of the school's, you know, logo. It's only 10 bucks. Is that, it's prescriptive, but does it fit in here? Because you're not, school uniforms are not fees. You do not have to provide a waiver for them. Unless they become expensive or they're prescriptive. And so we got some fine line decisions to make, you know, as to which way we go on this. But, but just keep in mind, if the kid can buy the uniform anywhere, it's probably, you're all right. You don't have to provide the kid the uniform. Um, is it a fee if it's expensive or prescriptive, then it is a fee and eligible for fee waivers. And there, I hear a lot of great ideas of how people are handling this and working through this in their schools. Uh, school activity clothing. This is uniforms for extracurricular activities are fees and subject to waivers. If you're asking the drill team, they gotta have the pink Nikes with the, you know, shoelaces. And they've got their own, um, you know, warm-up suits with their names on it or with the school name on it. That's prescriptive. That is something, that's a school activity clothing and is a fee, is subject to fee waivers. So, uh, and that can be even in, uh, a lot of the CT programs, the jackets, uh, to participate in the different organizations at, whatever. If you ever ask a student, hey, I think it'd be a good idea to show school spirit, why don't everybody wear their jackets on Friday? You've stepped over the line, okay? Anytime you require or ask or intake that you can be able to wear that jacket to show the school spirit or to be part of the group, and so-and-so doesn't have a jacket, he's gonna end up, so that's, you step over line. And that's why yearbooks and so forth are called out as not being school fees. Uh, rings and yearbooks and so forth. But if you have on the last day of school, you say, okay, we're gonna get together at 10 o'clock in assembly, we're gonna hand out the yearbooks, you have to stay on the school property by, you know, until noon, and everybody's signing their yearbooks and that's the time to do that, then that's, a school, a yearbook would be a fee. But if you say, okay, just come get your yearbook and you can do whatever you want, you're, you're free to go, you can say, you know, then that's not. So you gotta really careful what you're asking or requiring the student to be part of. And if he is being part of that and doesn't have what you, what that activity requires, then, then, and that's part of that. Uh, uh, school fees. Okay, fundraising, we've kind of talked through that. And we may allow for required group fundraisers, so. Uh, but there's a lot of nuances that we've kind of talked about. And provisions in lieu of fees must be voluntarily requested. And there's also a slew of nuances with that about what the kid can, can't do. He's gotta be able to do it. So it, we can talk more about that if you'd like to set that program up in your school. Uh, spend plans. We've taught a little bit about that and the recommended structure. We're going with everything identified on the charter accounts. Because we wanna be able to get to their, uh, APRs, Activity Program Reports. Yeah, if they're right, okay. That we can identify and go through that and identify these fees and where the, the monies are being spent for which activities. Object codes are kind of where we get down with the delineation. You're thinking of that as, as that, that's identifying or the level to delineate what the fees are. But we are collecting feedback over the next few months. And just, this is just the first point of trying to get to in three or four years, the activity-based costing. There are a whole load there about slide, about which specific criteria we're trying to build to. So happy to chat through email on that, more if they'd like. Uh, now, this year, and I, and this is a question, and Jamie has brought up the assurances for the federal programs by July 1. Now, you've always, also had to always do an assurance that you're following this school. And this was brought about by the 1994 Court Order, Department of Junction. And that is that you certify every year that you know what school fees are, what you're supposed to be doing. And I have, don't like papers, so I have gone to a web-based program to collect those. But it's not, and so school fees is part of the assurance, it's in the assurance. There's one question. But there'll also be this certificate of compliance. And I will send out in April, or April, August, which is after your, you've already, you will also have the insurance on your, on the one that Jamie sends out. I will send one out and it will say, okay, this can be a little more detailed. And you'll just click the box. And that, the assurance has to be given by every board chair, governing board chair, and every superintendent and every principal. Now, some of you, and so those three will get this. Now, the superintendent's gonna get a little longer survey, because he has to attach to it all the documents, the school fee notices, what the school fees are, and their waiver policies and a few other things. And that's a nice example of that. The new form is out there. It is almost word for word the old form. It's just a different format. A sample of it is out on our website, which is the schoolfees.utah.gov, schools.utah.gov, school fees. And, um, just like I say, same form, just no paper. It's also, it's a crosstalk spaced. It's gonna be, uh, then you certify with a digital signature. And, um, so that will be coming out. Uh, compliance. There will, the compliance has been delayed in code to 2021, 22 school year. And basically, you have to ignore me totally for three years. You know, because there are so many options and opportunities to be built in, to go back and forth. Because we are in the business and we want to get to correct. And I'm, I'm, and I'm not one size fits all, okay? We will get there, but basically, if you're working with us, you're open dialogue. But there are some, there is some teeth with the, with the new legislation of some fiscal, you know, responsibility with this. So just, that's coming up. I've asked for contacts. I've got most of them here. My apologies. I have not answered back to that. There will be an email going out, not this week, but probably next week. We'll get this work group going. I will try, I want one contact. We would like, I want, I want a lot of things in life, but anyway. I would like one contact for me to use. So we, we're dealing with one person within the LEA. If we have, uh, hotlines or stuff coming in, we can deal with that person in that LEA to, to work and resolve issues. It'll be the point person. I send information out and we gather information back. So certainly, let me know. Right now, a lot of that is the superintendent's. Some BA's, some, it is a deputy superintendent. So just let me know who you want that person to be. And I'll be reaching out to them, hopefully on a monthly basis at least, with emails, information going forward. Okay. And then, just to talk about the statistical report, uh, a little bit different perhaps. Uh, but fee waivers is key on that. How much you are not collecting in fees. And it's with, this could be probably a difficult number to come up with. But that is one number that has to be reported, is what it was waived in, in the fee waiver report, a number, a count, a number, count on students, a num, a dollar amount. And so, and with all things monitored or audited, you know, there are a lot of detail behind it. Okay, timeline. This year. The forms are, okay, that comes right off. Uniforms, you gotta stop. And we gotta make sure that we're, if they are, uniforms are expensive, they're prescriptive, they are a fee. And I will for fee waivers. We have a new form in the certificate of compliance. The House Bill 250 definitions are in full effect. There are a couple of little tweaks we'll have to make with the rule to come into it here, align with the House Bill. But basically, we're in alignment with that. Uh, 407 charges in effect. Uh, changes in effect. LA cannot require service in lieu of fees. Cannot require individual fundraising. And the dual cell comes effect in January of next year. So that's next year's, when you're doing the spend plan, the fees for the, uh, 20, 21 year, that's, that's when it starts. I appreciate that I've gotten a lot of schedules and spend plans and people are talking, is this work? Is this gonna work? Or what can we do here? So let's talk about it the next six, seven, eight months. Where are we, eight months? I don't know. I'm, I've lived a year in the last two months. So anyway. Okay. Um, that comes to being, okay, the next year, the next school year. Uh, House Bill 250 and 407, both, all changes are in effect. And that's basically everything. There's a couple of things called out that don't go into effect. But basically, for the following school year, the April 1, first deadline. And that may change, that may change with these rule changes. But basically, they were thinking by April 1, we needed to have the fee schedules and spend plans ready for the coming up year. Uh, new fee schedules, the rules, activities to the maximums. So make sure your LA's are thinking about what should be a maximum. That's, that's gonna be some low-hanging fruit to look at. Uh, delineation, spend planes, language requirements, that's the 20%. If you, student body, a 20% one language, it has to be printed as well as, um, printed documents of all your schedules and so forth. And LA cannot use one fee to subsidize another fee or fee waiver. Now that, as we talk about, you know, group fundraising, fundraising, what does that mean? All of that is, is so we can get to this cost of the activity where that fee is not being subsidized by another. To this gentleman's point, yeah, basketball, football can always raise a lot of money. What, and, and so that fee, but that fee for football can't be subsidizing another activity. Okay, uh, then the following year. This is when the activity-based costing comes into effect. And that activity-based costing actually will be the basis of the waivers that if, and this is that one LEA, one high school and an LEA or secondary school cannot be overburdened with the waivers. So you're gonna have to share the burden of the fee waivers. And so that's something else that's out there on the horizon that we'll have to get to and develop some, some good best practices for. And the board starts taking corrective actions. Hopefully, my team's in place and we can start actually doing some monitoring. And, and whatever that will be. Okay, uh, and then the textbook follows the following year. No textbooks. So there is a timeline spelled out. And, and there's our website up going. We kind of took it out from under the policy section it was in. It's kind of its own department now. So some of you lost it and I, my apologies that we didn't have that announced earlier. But anyway, it has everything that was on there before, everything about, talked about today, all the documents that we talked about today are there. And then if you have any questions, it's myself, my staff, Ian, and of course, Andy Solomon, his little policies, who I am working with on this project under the direction. So, questions? I just about took my time, Jamie. Anyway, we talked about some things. Call me. I am out about a lot of meetings. I apologize. I didn't want to be this point, but this is, the, the be at this point, but this is the beast of the project. So, an email is wonderful. I will try to get, I try to get clear my voicemails every evening, which unfortunately, might be a little bit later. And so, just let me know. If you've got something, I'll try to get back to you. Email works best. Any other questions?
Who's the legislator who came up with this idea?
Well, Lisbon B ran the bill that was passed. Robinson had another bill that was different. There's, they all voted for it.
Who do you talk to to explain to them what we already do? Because we already do cost accounting. We already track fees. This is like another layer on top of another layer.
Well, hopefully, it's not another layer. Hopefully, we can take what you're doing and...
So, that's why I wanted to...
Yeah. And so, yeah.
I can work with this because we're just a tiny school. But if you're a district, I don't even know how God's maybe would come up with the program codes to track every freaking dollar that comes in. It makes no sense. That is my...
Appreciate that. And, you know, it is. And I can appreciate that. And I really heartily hope you understand that we do want to do well in this endeavor, and we want to do it well for all parties. But, you know, I'm, you know, I came up in the world of Steve Covey, win-win for everyone, and we will work towards that. But I'm not naive. Sometimes, the changes are hard. And they'll be a little harder as we go through. But hopefully, we all get there. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. Appreciate what you do. No, we're, you're not going to be best buds, let me tell you. We're going to do it. Because you make me do better. So, I appreciate that.
Because I can show you what we're doing, and then you might help you. Because you're stuck in the middle.
I'm an Oreo cookie. Okay. Just one? All right. I hope everybody's awake. There's a lot to discuss before lunch. So, if you don't have a lot of questions, that's good because it's just right before lunch. So, the less questions you have, the quicker we can get there. These are the topics. Chart of accounts. These are the things that I'm going to talk about, and I'm going to have some of my team members discuss other parts. We're going to talk about chart of accounts, administrative roles, and then UPES, and then deadlines. And then, we also have a new school finance email. These are new programs for FY '20, not FY '19, but for FY '20. There's the NEST program, those districts that receive those NEST funds. Your revenue code for that is actually 3015. I forgot to put that on the slide. Your rural school transportation is 5318. The high needs school is 5324. And then, the TSSA is the 5678. And the student health and counseling is the 5679, with their respective revenue codes there. Also, I want to make note, that I also forgot to put on the slide, is a lot of revenue codes that you were using with 3400. If you review it, they should now be going to 3500. There's, there's just too many to list. I know Jamie had a presentation last year on that, which ones we're going to be switching from 3400 to 3500. I can go back and send that out to you guys, if you guys would like that.
Yes.
Correct. Jamie said that they're under the legislative estimate, under each program. So, if you want to go there as well, you can see that those have changed from 3400 to 3500. Correct. Also, my chart of accounts that we have.
So, the TSSA is the same as TSSA, right?
Yes, it is. It's a supply teacher supplement on the list program. It's an existing program. TSSA is the new program. It's a new success.
This is...
Two different programs, almost the same happen.
But it's a different program.
And I could actually change that to have parentheses in there. So, when you look at the chart of accounts, it says TSSA. 5678 is TSSA. Questions? Okay. This was an old program that we, that has a new title. The 5607 is now the National Board Certified Teacher Program, and not the Board Certified Teaching Initiative. But the program numbers stayed the same. CTE, we rearranged a little bit in the CTE for FY '20. We no longer have the 6143, 6148, all of those in betweens. We have the 6,000 series, the 6,100, 6,200, 6,300. You can look at that in the chart of accounts. And we are, we also moved out the college and career awareness, the work, the work-based learning, and school counseling to be out of the 6,000s and be in the 5,000 program codes with 5901, 5901, 2, and 3. If, in your systems, if you just want to remap those, that is, that is fine. That's all you have to do for those three programs. We took out the Perkins piece and put it under codes 7,000s in the programs. When we do our school-level reporting, we're pulling a lot of numbers based on the program numbers. And so, doing that, that allows us to, I think, actually, the ones that we sent out, we may have missed the CTE pieces because we were only looking at program 7,000s. And those are the federal programs.
So, are you, have these program changes made when we up our final budget for this year 19 in U.S.?
Not for 19, but for FY '20, yes. She asked if they needed to be for your final budget. For FY '19, final budget, they do not. These are for FY '20 going forward. Tammy talked a little bit about this. We have a new object code for student uniforms and clothing. There's the code. If it's, if you want to look at it, it's a little more detailed there. If it doesn't fit this definition, your, of your uniforms, it's a 610, it's a supply. And I believe you guys all have these slides. So, if you have questions on it, you can go back and read that, and refer to it, and know how to code these. This is for FY '20, not 19. We have a few new revenue codes for, to assist with the school fees as well. 1760 is, I should change that to student fines. Truancy is not a fine. Fines are not fee-wavable. That was in the, in the definition under school fees as well. And then, also, we have fundraisers at 1770. And you can find the definition for fundraisers under 277113. The deleted revenue codes is 1140, state charter school levy. My, I believe we took that in 18, but there, we allowed it in 19, well, for 18 in UPES. And so, now I'm really deleting, I really did delete it out of the system. So, if you tried 1140 last year, you were able to use it. Has changed. And we took out 1790, we deleted that. Other activity, because we feel that it fits, should fit under something else, as you move forward with school fees.
Yeah.
I've got a question for you. On 1140, so you can, for the districts, that's the Fund 26 revenue code, you want us to grade that, too?
Yes, that's my next slide. The first part is your incremental taxes, your RDAs, if you have those. That's the revenue program object function to use for that. All others will be deleted off the validations. And same with the charter school levy. It's Fund 26, program 5910, and revenue 1114 with those object codes. Anything other than that will be, will become an error for you, because those other options have been deleted off UPES. So, these are the ones to use. Anybody not get that? So, if I see something, someone call me and say, hey, I got an error in Fund 26, I'm going to point to this.
So, the revenue one line is not, is not going to be expected to be broken out by levy?
Correct. Yes. This is, this is how, this is how it's going to get recorded, under that one line. We have that in Fund 26, record it, your RDAs in one, and your levy piece under, under the 1114. These emails were sent out, I believe, in 2017 by Natalie, that actually specified this. Some of these, the charter levy was specified, and I think at a later time, the RDAs were also specified. I'd have to look that up. Questions? Going on to the admin rule. We've had a lot of questions about this. Following GASB, FASB, GAAP, whatever you're following, record it when you, when it occurs in the programs. It's written in rule. And I know a lot of people have received visits from program people, asking for detail about their programs. If you're not following this rule, you may or may not get, may get questions about what you're doing in your accounting systems. It doesn't specify when you have to do it, but it does say when they occur. Questions on this?
How does that apply with allocations of central kinds of expenses that then are later allocated via journal entry to locations specifically?
The question is, how does the essential pieces get allocated? Right here, it says to do it by fund function, location, program, and object or revenue code.
But it's not when they occur.
You could do it at the end.
How are you doing it? When are you doing it? Are you doing it at the end of the year?
At the end of the year.
To specific locations?
Some of them, not, I mean, a few of them. Most of them, we're booking location as they occur. But there are some that are true allocations that don't happen until the end of the year.
Can you, can you provide me an example of one of those allocations that is just happening at the end of the year, at a location?
I don't really care.
Okay.
What do you hide, darkness? We do an HSA or an HRA and allocate at the end of the year, and health insurance, down to the different programs. But it occurred during the year, some point during the year.
Okay.
So, that, that might be one example.
Okay. Well, I mean, this, this rule has been in there for two years. I wasn't part of it. But yeah, we can look at, look at those different options.
There's some programs that are specifically for, like the teacher supplemental salary. And so, we're not setting up teachers in that program. They're in their normal program at some point during the year. You identify which ones you're going to journal entry over to the, to the location.
Okay.
Or to that, not to the location, to that program.
To that program. We'll have to look at further into, into this as well. Can you make note of that? So, just, because I want to make sure that we're, we're doing everything that is possible for you guys to do. But we'll, we'll definitely look into how, how things are spent and those items that are done at the end of the year. The specific program, receive them on a 1/12 basis, the MSP portions. So, you should be allocating those pieces out to those specific programs when they occur. We'll have to look at the ones that cannot be done when, when you receive the funds.
So, what about with special ed funds and trying to balance the state versus federal to be MOE and all of that? I've had to make some adjustments that I couldn't make in the prior months. So, is that going to put me in trouble?
No. She asked if, when you have, for example, special ed, is that the specific one? Special ed, you're doing it, you're spending those monies, and then you're asking for the reimbursement. It's when the reimbursement occurs, that's probably when you should record it. Questions? Any other questions on that? Admin Rule 483 talks about the per pupil expenditure, the guidelines that, over, over the years, that we have met with some of you, and got ideas off you of what we should include and exclude in that. That's where that guideline is. And then, also, LEA shall record expenditures in district and school codes as reported in state-approved system, which is Cactus. So, you need to be reporting at the location, your expenditures, if they can be. John, I believe, is going to go in further detail of that process. Yeah.
Says that the LEA shall record expenditures. Or is it report expenditures?
I will have to double-check. Record, because at the end of the year, for one, you should be doing program accounting for most of your stuff. So, recording them to us at the year, at year-end should be fairly similar.
This is district and school code. So, this is location.
This is your location.
So, we have our location members in our own financial system that are different than the state's members. And so, we map them when we report them up to, to use your numbers.
We, yeah, we...
Our system, we're recording and using our numbers.
Correct. And that is fine. John is actually going to talk about location mapping as well. Because we have that built into UPES to allow you to use your codes and map them into, to fit USBE codes.
So, then what we can say is shall record expenditures, right?
Correct. Yeah, we can look at getting that changed. Rather, it should be report rather than record. Thank you. 277100, that provides a more detailed definition of programs, preschools, and also schools. Districts that have Cactus ID numbers for programs, if you don't, if you want to report it at a, at a specific school, for example, preschool, preschool is a good example. Some may have their, their own Cactus ID. But we are only reporting K through 12. Preschool is not part of that. That will get, if you don't record that preschool at an actual school that you want it recorded at, it will get dumped into the district level of the school-level report. And that will increase for all the schools unless you specify which school you want it to go to at the, at the school-level reporting. The definition of a school, that's, that kind of hits for a lot of the, for some of the charter schools that have multiple locations and are recording under one LEA number. We will be reaching out to you guys and having you review what that code is. And if that fits your definition, and we need to get you location numbers for those different buildings you're using, then we will work on that. UPES updates. There's a few things that I don't have in this slide that I wanted to discuss with you guys. One is, if you need your own user ID, create an account in UPES, and we will, we will get it approved. Do not share your username and passwords. It's been done in the past, and we will continue to do it. If we see that happening, we will, we will deactivate your account. And it's not fun when that happens. And it's not fun when that happens for you, especially when it's September 29th and you're trying to upload. These are the topics for, for UPES. John is going to discuss location mapping. I'll go over the deferred revenue and then the APR column alignments. Last year we mentioned deferred revenue. It was not required, but there actually were quite a few. Quite a few LEAs that used it based on our highly suggestion of using it. And for this year, for FY19, your data is required to, to submit through our deferred revenue piece in UPES. The deadline is December 31st. Local is not required, your local deferred revenue is not required. We only are asking for your federal and state. And those are the codes to use for that. And they must match your financial statements.
Can you go back just a second? The state is which?
You good?
Yeah.
I'm accessing deferred revenues through UPES. Go to Tools, Deferred Revenue. Then you select the correct fiscal year that you're using. Then you would enter in the related state and federal deferred amounts based on the program in which that revenue relates. And green is good. I'll show you that later. Don't forget to certify your submissions. This is also a plug for, for other things. Don't forget to submit your, to certify your submissions. There's been a handful of people that did not certify their indirect costs, so we did not calculate indirect costs for them. I'm not your babysitter. I may give out one warning, but if I, if I do that, it's probably because I was feeling good that day. Here's what your deferred revenue looks like. You have your state and your federal. Down there at the bottom, I don't know if you can see it, but those are green. That's why I said green is good. Once they, they're red until they, until your, your balance sheet matches what you have entered into this system right here. And then once they're green, you can have it certified by the person that certifies your files. Questions on that? I know we talked about it last year. I'm just giving you a quick overview of what we, of what we discussed. For UPES, the APR piece that changed a little bit, we're still working on some of the changes that we, we talked about last year. But these are the ones that, that we have made. The capital and debt service is now combined with your non-instructional, your Schedule K and Schedule J are, are in, in one tab on your, on your APR. And then career technology is renamed to applied technology and also includes the new column for, for the Perkins, your federal piece. Deadlines. Budgets are due within 30 days of your local board approving them. Your local board must approve budgets before June 30th. The, the code does not say on June 30th, it says before June 30th. And then you have 30 days to, to submit that file to both, to submit your budget to USBE and the state auditors. Don't forget the state auditors on that. The exception is your truth and taxation, districts that are going through truth and taxation. If you are, let Jamie and I know that you are going through truth and taxation so we can keep a record of that. Send an email. If you're listening online, email either, email Jamie and I. Your actuals are due by October 1st. I highly suggest testing your files early. We had an overload of timeouts last year. Both due to, to our part and then everybody trying to upload at once. So test your files, get them corrected. And, and we can work on that. The issue is that there are too many people trying to upload at once. And we don't, we don't have a control over that when you upload. We, we have things in progress, in, in progress right now to, to correct that, mitigate those issues. But it is your, it is your duty to test them and make sure that things are going to flow smooth for you this year.
We start testing now?
You can test whenever you want. And then whenever you upload a new file, it will just replace the old file. So you can try as many times as you want. Your financial statements, single audits, MSP selection, and then your, your charter reconciliations. Those are due to us by November 30th. Due to our reconciling that we have to do and the reports that we have to submit. If you could work with your auditors and getting them to us before November 30th. I think last year I got about 70 emails between the 29th and 30th. Please get those to us early. So if there are any adjustments that need to be made to your, your actual submission, we work on them sooner than later. Because also that flows into how we do our school level reporting and, and the other reports that are due for superintendent. And then our summer reports as well. Indirect costs. Submit those and certify by December 15th. Along with organizational chart and other supporting documents if you summarize within that section. If you summarize your data, provide us a supporting document showing, showing what you summarized. And Jamie introduced our whole team earlier. We do have a new email at schoolfinance@schools.utah.gov. To, to kind of ease everything, we have kind of grouped LEA districts and charter schools into, into different groups. And each one of us will be over a certain group and we'll be sending out emails for that as well. To let you know who you should be contacting. You can always contact me. I love getting all your emails, but I can't answer for 150 LEAs. So we, that's the way that we decided to do it and we, we'll get those groups and we'll have them email you directly on, on who's going to be over your LEA. And there's our contact information right there. Any questions? Okay.
All right, John, Financial Operations at USBE. Brett kind of touched on a couple of these words. There he is. But I'm going to dive a little deeper into the ESA mandated, this probably should say school level per people expenditure report. I think we've been working on this for a year or two, but I think we're, we're about to reach the point where we're actually going to go live and put the data. So we want to make sure everything's kind of in place. Hope we can get some good feedback and nothing put in stone yet. We know there's some work to do on this still. So we'll talk about the requirements. So there's ESA and there's board rule in place now. We'll, we'll take a look at the posted school report card that's up there right now. So right now it's up there, but it doesn't have the financial pieces. We'll kind of talk about where we think the financial pieces may go on the school report card. Then we'll take a look at the actual per people expenditure, the formulas, kind of the exclusions we took out of there. And we'll view kind of the sample report that we sent out. Hopefully everyone got that and was able to take a look at that. Then we'll talk about school IDs, LEA IDs. There is a difference and you can't do school level reporting without correct school code. So as Brett mentioned, we do have a location mapping tool in UPES now. It's not quite on the production site yet. We're still in dev testing it, but I have some screenshots of that. Should be pretty familiar with that. It's the same kind of mapping system as all the other UPES, UPES mapping tools. And that's about it. Some contact info on the last slide if there's any questions. So here's the ESA requirement. Yep. Oh, can't hear me? Is that better? Sorry about that. Okay. So here's the ESA requirement. There's the sections there. Basically it says, USBE, the SCA needs to publish a school report card. A piece of that school report card is this financial piece down here and I can't read that screen. So it says the per people expenditures of federal, state and local funds disaggregated by source of funds for each local education agency and school in the state for the preceding fiscal year. So I'm going to take that kind of sentence there and break it down through this presentation to just make sure we hit each element. But there's the ESA requirement there. We do have board rule R277-483. This is effective, it's not yet codified. I encourage you to take a look at that. I thought I had a link on here, but, so this is posted to our USB website right now. It basically says, in accord, in accordance with ESA, the superintendent shall make public required expenditure reporting elements, including school level expenditures. So that's kind of the board part. So this is a screenshot of the school report card. I'm, I'm guessing everyone's been here, looked at your schools. Within this report card is where we will be posting school level expenditure data. To get here, right now it's on the banner of the USB webpage. So if you go to schools.utah.gov, it's up top. It's one of the slidy things. You can click on it. Or the second link is the direct link to the school report card. So the next couple of slides are just screenshots from an actual school, it's school level report. Somewhere in here is where we'll be posting the financial data. We don't know exactly where yet. It could look like one of these boxes that we'll kind of drill down deeper into. It could kind of be laid out on the bottom like that. We're not exactly sure yet, but somewhere in here is where this will be posted. So, so now let's get into the actual formula. Or considering. Any questions on this formula to this point so far?
The question I had is Brett talked about not having preschool. If you wanted preschool, you would probably want to list it with the school or they would be divided out in the share of LEA expenditures. So I have another question. We provide the education for the prisoners that have done some corrections. It's a school location. It's, it's listed as a school, but we don't, all of the expenditures are tucked into the LEA expenditures. They're probably divided out even though they have nothing to do with K-12. So how do, how do we deal with that?
That's a good question.
The revenue comes from the USBE.
Right, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't have ADM there?
So if you review that R277-100, it defines what a program is versus a school. So you may want to look at that. Get out, out that way because if it doesn't have ADM, it doesn't meet the definition of a school.
Okay, good. So the share of.
It's not created ADM.
They dumped into that?
They would be dumped in, under the share of the LEA expenditures, yes.
And that, that kind of distorts the. Pupil expenditure by individual schools if you have adult ed type programs that are dumped into that.
Yeah, there's a lot of little tiny things that each LEA is doing differently and we'll look at that. But I mean, as, as an overall issue, we can't get down to that detail for LEA. You have to put out a broad, broad aspect and in the end, these are going to be your reports. And so you should be able to explain why it's a certain number versus another number and tell, tell the public that, that comes to you. Does that help?
Yes, yes, yes.
We, we want to, we want to work with you guys on this and that, and that's our purposes. We, we posted them, we gave them to you guys a few weeks, a week early just so you guys can have a little time to review it and pick out the anomalies that are for your LEA. And if they're, they're broad, we can make those adjustments. If they're LEA specific, it's, it's a little more difficult. But we can, we can look at that. But in the end, you would have to be able to explain that to, to your public as to what those differences are and why it's a certain number.
Thank you, Brett, and thanks for the question. This is the feedback we like. Again, we're, we're, nothing's set in stone yet, so we're, you know, this, this is good input. And we want to get it right because eventually this will be automated and programmed into UPES. So I think now would be the time to raise these questions and concerns. And perhaps we could look at adult ed in general. Okay. So to, to this point, and like I said, we already have some feedback and we might be adding more to this, but here's the exclusions that we have taken out to this point. Excluded expenditures may not be associated with K-12 students or are one-time significant outlays that may distort the data. So right now we have your capital construction. That's function 4000s with object code. Or function 4000 in object range 700s and 800s. All debt service function 5000s excluded. 26, financing and fund 60, internal service funds have been excluded as well. So the reports you've got, these have been taken out already from your expenditures and they're not part of the per people expenditure. Any questions on exclusions?
So they're taken out completely and they don't get layered on like a.
Yes, so the question was they get taken out completely. So the report, it'll show the exclusions and list them at the bottom. But it's not part of the kind of numerator of that equation.
But you're taking them out as part of your compensation or part of your.
Uh, yes, yep. So we, to answer the question, we, we take the exclusions out of the expenditures before we divide by ADM.
So what do you end up doing with transportation costs that goes allocated?
Yeah, so transportation, and I have a slide on this, but I think we decided they should go to the, to the district, so the central costs. So those, those costs get divided among all the schools in your LEA.
It's one of those, not the best, but.
Yeah, so these are, these are hard. School lunch is the same way. I don't, I don't think we can ever get perfect school versus central reporting, but. We, we, another thing to note, we have been working as a part of a work, a work group. So we're with 37 other states and we're all kind of discussing how everyone's doing this. That's what a majority, if, if not most or all are doing with transportation. Okay, so now we'll look at this part. So we need federal, state and local funds disaggregated by source of funds. So this is another requirement that the report is asking to display. Now let me catch. So for federal. That would be program 7,000 level expenditures. As well as 8,000 level expenditures. And to get the 8,000 level, which is the school lunch. We had to look at revenue. So we're taking the ratio, total federal revenue divided by total revenue and multiplying it by your 8,000 level expenditures. So that's the closest we could come up with. So that's the closest we could come up with for school lunch, federal expenditures. Some states didn't even attempt that and they included that in their exclusions. The rest goes to state and local. Any questions there? And I'm going to pull up the report and maybe these will make more sense. So now we're on site or your school level versus central or your LEA level expenditures.
Let me go back to one thing that you had.
Sure.
So one of the exclusions is if you're building your own building, obviously, the debt service, etc. If you're renting space, however, that's built in. So that puts a distinct disadvantage against those that are not building buildings when the public looks at the cost per pupil. Would that not be excluded as well?
We did notice that, especially on charter schools. So sometimes that caused a significance. So that's something we're looking at. So the question was...
Excuse that tremendously.
Yeah, some of those rent charges were pretty big. I think eventually that's where we're going to go. Is that fair? Can I say that?
If they're in the 4,000, yes. 4,000 program, 4,000. Having a rent function.
You may want to say in my, for those listening.
Looking at excluding rent, rent in the 4,000 function would probably be what we exclude. Otherwise, it's part of your operation.
Yeah, because we record it in 26.4.
I would assume most are doing it in 26, which is part of your operation. And that would be included in the calculation.
So which one should we do it in? Is it better to do it in that one? Because we were told to do it in the 26.
It is 26 because it is part of your operation. And we can look at that further. But as of right now, your rent should be in 2,600. And we are including that because 2,600, if you look at the function, is operation and maintenance.
But it's skewed tremendously with real cost to provide...
Yes. And so we can look at excluding that piece for everybody. If it's something across the board or if it's specific to LEAs, we can look at excluding that.
Yeah, I think if you're going to try to compare equally between districts and charter schools particularly, because that's really where that difference will occur. I think you've got to exclude that.
Correct.
That's part of the operating costs of charter schools. You have to include in order to have ratios, right? You're going to include in kind of a financial ratio. That should be in there. Because it's part of your operating maintenance. Regular rent payment, we pay lease payments on certain things.
The difference is that if you look at that, it's basically by tax revenues. You have property taxes for dividends. So what you're looking at is the public is going to look at and say, "Cost per month is far different than others. It's skewed because the revenue stream is different." So you have to exclude it to really balance out for that comparison. I disagree that it's going to be other financial calculations that maybe gets calculated back in. That's where that problem is going to occur.
And one other point is that charter school that I have, I have two my books that I lease to. So my Draper campus is going to look great because the 5,000 goes away, but my other two are going to look really high because I have leases on them. I'm trying to buy them, but it takes first. If you compare my three schools, Draper's going to look a lot less than my other two plus those, which isn't a fair comparison.
And that's something we can look at. But I mean, it's... Obviously, this is new and any, anything that you feel should be excluded, if you don't send it to us, we can't review it. So send us emails and discuss that. Because I would definitely like all this feedback so we can look at all of that. Exactly, that's the reason that we gave you guys these 18 reports so you can review those anomalies and get that back to us, any feedback that you have.
Okay, thank you for that. We are looking at that. There's, we agree, especially if half your schools are one way and half the other. They pull up your LEA. So we'll take a look at that and try and come up with some solutions there. Thank you. Okay, this is where we were. I think this is where we were. So site level will record salaries, benefits, supplies, equipment, or contracted services that occur at the school level. Central and LEA, I've got a question over here. So central administrative costs, LEA transportation, and child nutrition costs. And that's kind of, this doesn't catch everything, obviously. If you have questions on an individual transaction, let us know. We may be able to help there. But just know if you record something to central, it gets divided on all your schools. So this is the report we sent out. Did everyone get a chance to look at this?
Good report.
Oh, thank you. So this isn't final, it's not going to look like this. Again, it's posted on, it's going to be posted on our website. But we wanted to focus on content, getting the numbers right, especially before we hardcoded into UPES. So up top, we have the LEA and LEA ID. And then down a couple rolls, rows, rolls, rows, that's where your school IDs are. And I'll show you in a couple of slides where to get that list of school IDs. And then a couple more slides will show you how to map to those school IDs in UPES if they don't match. But up top, so school name, enrollment, I'm just kind of working down the list here. We have some indicators to maybe describe some of the discrepancies in the data. So we've got Title I here, Title I there. We added NASS so it doesn't kind of fit the format. But if you're a NASS school, there should be some sort of indicator. Well, some sort of visual cues as supporting information to maybe describe some of the discrepancies here. This top section is site level. And that's federal, state, and then total, right? Yeah. This bottom section, if you notice, all these numbers are the same. These are your shared central costs and they're divided equally among all schools. We've had some questions. So why is it equal? Why isn't it weighted according to ADM in proportion to your total ADM? We're looking at that as well, but we feel, and a lot of states are divided on this. But your central costs, if it is something that should be weighted, it may be better coded to a school. So maybe we can break that transaction into a school level. So give it a school code and an amount. Down here, this row, I forgot what color this is. This is your school level per people expenditure number. So in the school report card, when you go to this school, that's the number that's going to show up there. Down here, we have, where's my button? Down here is total expenditures, total exclusions. So here, I couldn't fit it onto the slide, but we'll list out the exclusion. So this was your debt service with the amount and we'll list those out. And you know, just some, where we get enrollment, just some supporting or additional information there. Great band, I missed great band up here, so that's right below the Title I. Did this report make sense? Does everyone, any questions on this in itself?
So do you only have one school?
Yeah, so if you have one school, there'll be two columns. There'll be your school column and then kind of the totals here.
And the totals will be, yeah. It's the same number?
Yeah. And the one schools, especially the charter schools, they'll look a little weird. So all expenditures were either coded to the site, to the school ID, or to the LEA ID. So all data is either on top or bottom. So we're looking at a way to make that a little better. But with school IDs, I think it's important to note, even if you have one school, you'll have an LEA ID, but there's also a school ID. So they're not the same. Okay, any questions on this report? You guys, great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you have one school at a charter school and you should be coding your administration piece at the LEA level and then code the stuff that's actually done at the school, at the school level. So you should get that, in the end, you would get those, the share piece and the site level. Does that make sense? And also, other, for making sure that your chair has the correct location to control that as well.
Okay, so I want to talk about the school ID versus the LEA ID. So LEA up top, school ID's there. So these are Cactus IDs. This is how we report to the school level. So we need your LEA and the school code in your UPES upload. The best place I've found to get the school codes is from our website. It's the Schools Directory, schools.utah.gov backslash Schools Directory. So if you click that, export it to CSV. I think one of the, let's see. So this is what the top will look like after you export it. So the column in yellow is your LEA or district ID. And then the column in blue, which I don't know if you can see that, is your school code. So these columns in blue are the numbers we need in UPES. So in your UPES upload, so these blue columns will get coded in those individual school columns. And the yellow ones, your district level, will get, so this 1,000 will be spread across all your schools.
Are this one clear? So on that upload for any, like, district, charter level, top. How does, like, I think most of our VCU 099 right now, you want that changed to our 14, Jordan. And then, and then all are individual school locations.
Yeah, so I don't know what 099 is, but you can either map 099 to your, to the 14 or you can change your 999 to 14 in your upload. And if you do that, it'll go to the LEA level, distribute that cost across your schools. If you want those maps to an actual school, then you need to grab these numbers from there. Okay. So here, now we have our location mapping tool in UPES. It's similar to all the other mapping in UPES, so it'll look the same pretty much. Basically, you go in there, you go to your LEA, you click Tools and then Mapping, and then you get here. So if you see codes here in this box, let me catch them. So it says unmapped codes. So what UPES is doing, it's looking at your last submission and pulling the school codes and then comparing it to the Cactus school codes. So if there's not a match, they show up here. And I believe you won't be able to certify unless you map these. So if you want to map, you click the Create Mapping up top here. And that goes to the screen. And sorry, just pulled a random LEA. This is, this is, this is in test. This isn't in production yet. So if you go look for this right now, it won't be in there. But you want to map your school code. And then it's already in your LEA, it'll know your schools, and you pick the school you want it to go to. And then your mapping's made. It's important to always put three digits, so even if it's a two-digit, you want to leave with a zero. So 014 or 001. After that, it comes down here into current mappings where you can delete or edit as needed. So pretty similar to the other mappings in UPES, right? So that should be coming live within a week or so?
Yeah, they should be pushing it to production on Friday.
Okay, production on Friday. So yeah, go check that out. Another thing to mention, so UPES is checking to see if the codes you entered on your last upload match a code in Cactus, not necessarily your codes in Cactus. So if it is a valid Cactus code, it's not necessarily going to show up here in unmapped codes. So what I encourage is to go download your list and make sure everything's okay. And just compare. So these are the codes we need. And if they match your system, so if your code says one thing and it's a valid Cactus code, it may not show up in that unmapped codes, is that right? So I encourage, take a look at this list. These are the codes we need. These are the codes that match the ADM data that we get. And it's crucial for the calculation. Okay, any questions on mapping?
Is the directory current updated?
What was that?
The school directory? Is it current and updated?
Uh, yeah, should be. Yeah.
Points to Cactus.
Pulls from Cactus.
So if it only have one location, that's the way it stays?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yep, so if you have one location, you'll have an LEA code and a school code. And you want everything coded to the school, right?
The things that we talked about that in central should be at the...
Oh, okay. Yep. So even though one location, you may have different locations that you're coding to in your upload.
Well, they don't, as Providence Hall, our campuses are all in the same street. And we've been told for a while that we're going to get separate codes where there's only one on that directory. So if that's the way it's gone, I'm happy with it.
That's one, tell her that we're going to talk about it. They may have separate locations.
So there are several charter, well, about a handful of charter schools that, as Providence described, they're all on one street, but they're different buildings. That's where you need to read R277100. It'd be the same location building. Each location is gathered by ADM. I can't remember the fault of this case, something to record up for you, but read that. And if you put that definition on the school, that location, that definition, you'll need to get another, you'll need to get school IDs for each one of your locations. So review that code. We will also be sending out emails to those that we feel may and may not meet that. And we can work on you with that.
So we were told that we were required to do that recording through fiscal year 19. And then your office would find us the location code. We didn't have a separate location number, then we would not have to do that recording. So we're now at the end of the fiscal year. And for some of them, they have split that out by location, like Providence does have it, where they could do that reporting by location. But for example, a median, it would be more difficult. We would have to go back and figure out how to allocate that. So if we don't currently have a separate location code, I'm interpreting that as for fiscal year 19, we report under the one location code we've been assigned. If we think that we may need a separate location code, we can work with your office for fiscal year 20?
That is correct. I don't want to have you guys correct anything for 19 that we already have, that we didn't do the first year. And so if we work with you, beginning or at the end of this year, we will work with you and get those location IDs for next year.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Brett. That's kind of all, any questions for your shop?
Director, I've sent our schools, thank you on seven business managers.
The school-level report to the business manager.
Yeah, because he has no authority to be in, so.
Sure. I can, I can do that, but it's going to go to all business managers, if everyone's okay. So thank you for your time and your feedback. Again, this, we're, we're trying to finish this up, get the final touches, get the exclusions right. A lot of states have published already their financial data to their report card. And we, we've kind of been looking at some of the feedback they've been getting through those, those that have posted already. And these are some of the headlines. This is coming from the media. So I've redacted the actual counties and districts and schools, but I wanted to put these up here to show you that people are going to be looking at this stuff. So I read that. So where'd it go? So state falls short on school data transparency. District defends school night, school finance website critics call data deceptive, and so on. So here's some critical headline that we kind of viewed there.
Isn't that kind of what we said?
What's that?
Isn't that kind of what we said up prior?
What's that?
This is going to be the result.
Oh, yeah. And we don't necessarily disagree, it's, you know.
Wasn't it really useful?
So with our job, we, we need to get as good as we can, as close as we can to accuracy. And again, it's, it's going to be hard to get perfect on this type of reporting, but we will try our best. There were some positive headlines too, some good stuff. Going to read through those, so. You know, just, I can't, I, I can't see the screen from this angle. So what's next for our team? We debated putting this on here or not, but we think uploads will be quicker this year. I wanted to put quotes on that and, you know, maybe shrink it a little. But we, we are on our own server now, or we will be. We've been promised that. We are, we migrated UPES, or we're almost done, to Microsoft.net 2.0. We also found a bug that was timing out an upload after like 15 hours or something. So we got rid of that timeout. It was more like three, but that was a joke, sorry. Teacher salaries, we're starting to get requests for teacher salaries. I know we talked about with TSSA and TSSP, or TSSA. We don't have a great way to get teacher salary information right now. So we may be building that into UPES as a way to just upload.
But we do teacher salaries in the transparency report once a year already.
Yeah, so transparency is tough. It's, it's, first, it's, it's not our data. Second, everyone reports differently. And third, it's hard to extract a teacher from a non-teacher in transparency.
If you're going to collect that data, one of the things that they said with, with the transparency website was they were going to try and reduce redundant reporting.
Right.
Can you go back to the legislature and make a proposal to them that they get rid of our transparency proposal submission and use this instead? So we don't submit, put it in two different formats?
Right, and that's, that's what we want. That would be the goal, and we're, we're going to request that. I think transitarians, or transparency is managed by the state auditor's office now. It used to be state finance. What we want, perhaps, a, a good way would be to us to get all the data we need, and then us send that to transparency. It would be up to them, but that's something we would want.
It would go a long way if the state office came out, the school board came out with a recommendation to replace transparency with this, then you would send information to the transparency website.
Yep. So we either want that, or we want transparency to be in a format that's usable, that we can grab this data. So we're going to.
We must control that one.
Right, we're, we're going to work towards one of those two, but we're, we are trying to reduce the burden, so you're not submitting the same information in nine different places. Okay. And again, I've kind of mentioned this, we will be automating this process. So school level per pupil expenditure reporting. So again, if you have feedback or anything we can help with, we're all pretty new here. I'm, I'm new, so we appreciate all the input. And that's all I have. Any final questions?
All right, last night was my, was my son's very first T-ball game. And before the game, he was, he was all out of sorts, kind of emotional. Didn't have an appetite. And so I said, seems like you're, you're a little nervous about this game. And I said, I, I understand, I gotta give a presentation tomorrow. And he just said, Dad, T-ball is way harder. So, so I, I hope so. So like I said, I'm Danny Davis. I've been on the school finance team for the last two months or so. I spent the last six and a half years at the, at the tax commission as a corporate tax auditor, but I'm excited to be here and get to know you. I'll be working a lot with charter schools specifically, and charter school authorizers. One of my first tasks was to go over the financial statements and do a, a review of those. And you all should have gotten the letters that we just sent out either last month at Charter Schools or about last week to the districts. For the charter schools, we sent those to the, the head of the school and the board chair. And for the districts, we sent those to the superintendents and the business administrators. Okay, so why we do this? First of all, it's a statutory requirement. The code 53E 3603 says, "The State Board of Education is responsible for verifying audits of financial and student accounting records of school districts for purposes of determining the allocation of uniform school fund money." So it's our responsibility to verify those audits that the, your external auditor or your independent auditor does. And so, and then also in 53E 3501, it says, "The State Board of Education shall determine if the minimum standards have been met and the required reports are properly submitted." And then we also have the, the federal requirement for the federal awards, which says that the pass-through entity, which is us, the USBE, must be responsible for issuing a management decision for audit findings that relate to federal awards it makes to subrecipients. And so just to go over the process here, I'll go over what the LEAs do, kind of, and you're all probably familiar with this process. But the, first of all, the independent auditor will complete the fieldwork and verify the necessary audit adjustments before October 1. And that verifying the, the audit adjustments is a pretty important thing. And sometimes, it sounds like, from what Brett told us, that sometimes we get those after October 1. So if we can get those before October 1, that's what, that's what we need to do. And then you all know that the uploads to UPES for the APR and the AFR are due by October 1st. And then by November 30th, we'll get, we'll get the independent auditor's review and the financial statements that go with that. And some of the reports that are included in that are the report on the financial statements and the auditor's opinions, opinion on that. And then the report on internal controls over financial reporting, the report on controls over compliance, and then report on compliance for each major federal program, also known as the single audit, for the, where applicable, when federal awards are over $750,000. And then I have at the bottom the code there, if you, if you wanted to see where those requirements are. And then on our end, as far as what our, what we do with that, is we're going to compare the financial statements that we get by November 30th to the UPES upload information, the APR and the AFR. We're going to review the program balances, make sure the program, programs don't have negative balances. We're going to review fund balances, and then we're going to reconcile between the financial statements and the APR and AFR. And we're trying to do that by December 15. And then after that, we create the superintendent summer reports from the past. Apparently, we were doing this by the end of the year. Just this year, it changed, we gave us two more weeks to get those done. So there's a bit of a, there's a bit of a time crunch at this time of the year. And so that's why it's important to get those uploads, adjustments, and financial statements into us in a timely manner. And then down here, the USB reviews, independent auditor reports, and we're going to try and do that by March 1st. This year, obviously, you, we weren't able to do that. We had a lot of change with Vaughn leaving and, and all of us new employees coming on. And then we're also going to try and get those letters out by March, March 31st going forward. Okay, and I just want to go kind of high level about some of the results of, of the letters that were sent out, and just so you see where we fall here. First, looking at school districts. This bottom section, the green section here, would be the number of letters sent that had no findings at all from your, either from your independent auditor or any findings we might have added on top of that. So you can see that in 2017 compared to 2018 is similar. And then the yellow section above that is the letters that were, that were sent but responses required back to us. And the reason that no response be required if you had a finding would be that their, the management response within the financial statements was sufficient. It's possible sometimes that the management response that we determined is not sufficient, so we might ask for a response. But for the most part, those, those have been pretty, pretty good, the responses we saw in the financial statements. So if you don't want to send us a, a response in the future, you know, getting those management responses in the financial statements to those findings is, is a good way. And then the top, the, the orange or red section there is the, just the number in each year that, that have to send us a response. And then, and, and then the same thing for charter schools here. There's obviously a lot more, more charter schools. And you can look at that, we got 59, what we call green letters, or letters with no findings, in 17 compared to, I believe it's 65 in 18, and then 16 letters that were sent with findings that don't need a response in 17 compared to 12 in 18. And then for letters that do require responses, in 17, we had 40, and this year, down to 36. So as we've talked about already, where do we want to send responses? We just barely set up this new email account that you'll see on there, the, the schoolfinance@schools.utah.gov. When we sent out the, the charter school letters, the, the letter indicated to send a response to me, because we hadn't quite set up that, that new email. So you're free for charter schools to send it to either me or to the, the central email. And then districts, just go ahead and send it to the, the central email there. And then, and then the deadlines are on there as well. So pay attention to that, because we do record the responses and who's responded, and if we need to follow up. Let's see. And then in the letter, if you had a finding, you'll see that it was, the finding would have been labeled as one of these things, a material weakness, significant deficiency, non-compliance finding, or some other matter. And if you're not familiar with these terms, you kind of just look at it from, from top to bottom. The top, material weakness is the, what we would deem the, the most risky finding, and then down to the bottom. So a material weakness, as, as we define it here, is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control, such that there is a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement or material non-compliance of the entity's financial statements or type of compliance requirement will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. And then a significant deficiency, similar to that, but in less, less, yeah, less severe, thanks. Is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control that is less severe than a material weakness, yet important enough to merit attention by those charged with governance. And then I'll show you on the next slide, but the majority of the findings were these non-compliance findings. And it is a deficiency in internal control when the design or operation of a control does not allow management or employees in the normal course of performing their assigned functions to prevent or detect and correct misstatements or non-compliance with the compliance requirement on a timely basis. And then the other matters would be such things that might have been listed in your management letter or other findings we might have had that don't quite fit into the, the. And like I mentioned, some of the total findings that we've had, I broke them out here between 2017 and 2018. So for the school districts, the total findings between the independent auditors and, and our findings in 17 is 46. And then in 18, it's down to 31. So that's, that's great for school districts, so getting a little bit better. And like I mentioned, most of those were the non-compliance, the, the big section of the pie there. And for charter schools, it's a similar story. So down from 84 to 65, with most of those being non-compliance issues. And then I just wanted to mention, you know, when looking at some of the findings, some of the, the trends or some of the more common findings specific to all the different LEAs, probably the one that was repeated most was this non-compliance finding that says that appropriation in excess of expendable revenue or warrants drawn in excess of expendable revenue. So basically, what this is, is when your, your actual expenditures are more than what the budgeted expenditures were for the year. And the code here talks about that. 30, oh, sorry, 53G 7305 says, "The governing board may not make appropriation in excess of its estimated expendable revenue, including undistributed reserves for the following fiscal year." And 53G 7307 says, "The budget officer of a governing board may not draw warrants on school district or charter school funds, except in accordance with and within the limits of the budget passed by the governing board." So then, how do, how do we avoid this in the future? Basically, we need, we need to adopt an amended budget by the end of the current fiscal year to account for items not considered in the original budget of the, of the current year. So we'll see, a lot of times that you'll have your original budget, but that budget was never, never amended to consider things that you weren't expecting, things such as capital expenditures, new grants received during the year, change in salaries, or, and this is a pretty common one, account for accrued expenses to be paid after the year end that need to be accrued for, for reporting purposes, such as wages, and then any other items that you might not have anticipated during the original budget. Any questions on, on that? And then another common finding, this is more particular to the charter schools, was the net assets, negativeness at net assets with operating losses. So basically, when your assets were less than your liabilities. And then we also saw that the current year income was actually a loss. So, you know, this may mean that the continuing operations may not be sufficient to cover future obligations. So how to avoid this? Focus on enrollment. We see a lot of charter schools that, that have a set enrollment number that they haven't met yet, and they're working toward getting that. And they may be a new charter, or, or maybe they're, they're a few years in, but they're struggling to get their enrollment. So that's, that's an important one. And then make sure you apply for the applicable grants. Make sure you have a plan to get back in the, back in the black, basically. So, and use your budget to do that. And then monitor spending and look for effective cost options, whether renting or, or building and bonding, or those kind of things. Make, you know, make, make wise choices with, with the cost options there. So that's all, all I have. There's my contact, and that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you very much.
We're going to break for lunch and come back at 1:30. We're going to go over Utah grants updates, special ads coming to present on several issues. And then our child nutrition program is coming to present after them. And then transportation. Transportation. I put Child Nutrition and Transportation at the end in case charter schools don't have either. You can leave as soon as Special Ed is done. If you do participate in Child Nutrition, stay for that one. If you participate in Transportation, please stay for that one. There's a lot of changes coming out in February of 2020 for Transportation. And so please, please stay for those. Thank you, we'll see you back at 1:30.
Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome back from lunch. I hope everyone had a good lunch. If I haven't met you, my name is Rebecca Nielsen, and I am with the Utah Grants Management Team, giving you an update on the Utah Grants Management System. Can you hear me okay? First, I'd like to address some timelines within Utah Grants and reimbursement requests specifically. So as we are approaching our first year-end close in Utah Grants, we are learning much about our timeline and processes and how much time it takes to close out a month or a fiscal year. So this will be our first time around. Reimbursement requests to be paid on the June allotment memo need to be submitted to the Board of Education, approved by your internal approver by June 10th. To be on the July allotment memo, which will be our period 13 fiscal year 19, period 13 need to be submitted by July 10th. And then typically, we will have until August 12th or approximately 45 days after the state fiscal year end to submit reimbursements for that fiscal year, for the expenditures that are incurred within the fiscal year. So pay attention to your project end dates, your project start and end dates. The period of performance still applies. You can still take some time to submit your reimbursement request after that period of performance is closed. But we do need to make sure your expenses are incurred within that period of performance. Where can you find what your period of performance is on any program, federal or state? You can find it here in Utah Grants. So in Utah Grants, if you click on the Grants button at the very top of the screen, oh, sorry, I have to, there's your timeline. Everyone, take that really quick. I'll give you a chance to absorb. I forget, I've got two. Question?
I'm sorry, so if it was in June and we still haven't spent the 19, we still request that July and then general entry, is that what you said?
So let's make sure that everyone can hear your question. Hold on. Will you? You help me with this. I think it needs to be turned on too. I'm going to have you say it again in the mic.
So the question is, if I've spent all my money in June, can I request it for the July allotment memo? And yes, you can. You have actually until the August allotment memo to request those reimbursements, as long as they're incurred before the end of June. Okay? Okay. So period of performance, as long as they're incurred before the end of June. It will vary grant to grant. Typically, state programs are all the same, and typically, federal programs model the same pattern as each other. But you can find that out within the Grants system on your award letter or directly in the Grants tab of Utah Grants. So if you click on Grants at the, let's see. Jamie, can I have you advance the slide for me?
I thought you can move back.
Oh, I don't know, it's not working again. Okay. Grants tab, main menu, so don't click on pending tasks or anything. You can see your project period right from that main screen. You can also see it by going into the grant program itself or into your award letter to see what that period of performance is. So make sure as you're submitting your reimbursement requests that the expense is incurred within that period of performance. When are my 2020 applications going to be available in Utah Grants? Thanks, Jamie.
We are ready in Utah Grants to start loading 2020 programs. We have all of our direct costs rates. His team worked loaded into the grant system. We're all set up and ready to go. So as soon as our programs transfer the information to the financial accounting office, we'll be able to set those up. Be watching for them. In fact, I think we have some that are going active even this week. So start watching in Utah Grants for your 2020 programs. All applications will be in Utah Grants this year. So last year, we utilized UCA, Utah Consolidated Application, for a few applications. We will not be doing that this year. 100% of grant applications will be performed in Utah Grants. Question?
Can you hear her in my mouth? Is that okay? Who else has put this in their mouth? Okay. I'm going to talk a little bit more about UCA in just a few minutes, and also about the title programs that will be in the Utah Grant System. Okay, pay attention to your application deadlines. So the application deadlines are not a target date, they are a hard, fast, fixed date. Our vendor, who we work with on the Utah Grant System, is baffled when we want to continue to extend deadlines on applications. They have never worked with an agency that wants to extend deadlines the way that we do. We're very flexible with our application due dates. It's very hard to manage from a system standpoint, and also, it makes us inefficient as a state agency. It will help us to get payments out and awards out to all of our LEAs if we make sure that these application deadlines are being heeded and paid attention to. Let me show you where you can find your application deadline. Okay. In Utah Grants, if you click on the Application tab at the top, don't click anything on the left, you will see all of your applications that are available to you. If you click on the Application Deadline heading at the very top, you'll be able to sort it A to Z or Z to A. If you click twice, you'll be able to see what's coming due, what has been already submitted. You'll see the status of all of your applications. And this is regardless if anyone has owned that application or not. So you'll see all of your applications here, even if it's not submitted. We've had a few phone calls saying, "Thanks for this money, but what in the heck even is this? We don't even know what you're giving us money for." We have found out recently that some of the things that we see in Utah Grants are not the same things that you are seeing within Utah Grants. And as this was explained to us by our vendor, it kind of makes sense, but it's kind of infuriating at the same time. So we appreciate you as you give us feedback on things that are not working, things that you can't see. I don't know, sometimes it may be a matter of training or us providing information, or there may be a bug in the system. So if you're having any problems, please let us know. That's how we found out about this one, was with a phone call saying, "I really have no idea what you're talking about. I'm not seeing what you're seeing." So please make sure that you're reporting to us any issues that you have, and I'll give you our contact information at the end of this presentation. So if you don't even know what this application is for, you don't know who needs to apply for it, who needs to be my creator of this application. Typically, on a grant cycle, you'll be going from an opportunity to an application to a grant. On competitive awards, that's how things work within the Utah Grant System. However, within the Board of Education, most of our grants are formula-driven, where we predetermined an allocation amount to the LEAs prior to that application ever being published, ever going out. As such, we don't publish most of our applications as an opportunity to apply, but as a draft application. So everything that we're making available for you to see on the program is part of the opportunity that is actually skipped in the Utah Grant System. So it takes a couple steps, but you can get back to that information, and I am going to show you how to do that. Okay, so on the Application tab, you can view the program information by clicking on the I icon. I just wanted to explain really quickly. Some of you are afraid to click on anything in Utah Grants because you don't want it to become yours. Whenever you see the I icon, you're not doing any harm. It's just a view, and that's it. Okay? It will not assign any ownership of that application to you if you click on the I. Okay. So to get to the details, first you need to find the program. So on the Applications tab, identify the program that you are looking for and click on the I icon. And then within the application itself, the very top section says Opportunity Overview. There's a small, very tiny link there that will take you back to the opportunity page. And I will put this all in a PDF instruction guide that I'll put on our website too, so that if you forget or need to share this information with others, it will be there. But I just wanted to show you where that was today. So down here in the Opportunity Description, it gives me details about the program. What I've published to say what this program is. You can also go through all of the other tabs with the financials, the documents, and the attachments to see if there are any forms or PDFs that are associated with this application. And again, you can do all of this before you own the application yourself. Okay, a reminder about application ownership and sharing. If you click on the little play triangle button, this application does become yours. You get this little warning saying, "Are you sure? Are you sure? Are you really, really sure that you want to take this application? Because once you take it, it's going to be yours." I will remind you that when it is yours, that means that nobody else can edit that application. I understand that this may be difficult as we are trying to enter programmatic information and financial information into an application, and that Utah Grants does not perform at all the same way the UCA did in completing those applications. Unfortunately, that's a restriction that we have with the vended product, that we can only have one application owner. So we're asking that each of you work with your programmatic contacts and your financial contacts together as you're completing that application. Okay. So again, applications can have only one owner. However, you can see all of the application components prior to accepting ownership. So you can look at it and make sure it's yours, or go and talk to the person down the hall who needs to accept that ownership. And then also, you'll need to coordinate the aspects of completing that application with the appropriate individuals. Okay. Application forms and attachments can be downloaded and shared. So if you're the owner of the application, you could share the forms with your colleague down the hall, who then can fill out the information and send it back to you. So that's a great way to manage that. Also, remember that application ownership is not program ownership. So if you complete the application, you do not have to, the same individual does not have to submit a reimbursement request. So those can be very separate. Once the application is submitted and accepted and turned into an award, all bets are off, and each new task can be created by any active Utah Grants user. The application sharing will become very important as we get into completing our title applications within Utah Grants this year. We used the UCA last year for an extra year in our title applications because there were certain forms that we had not yet built in Utah Grants. These are very programmatic-heavy forms that we have now built and will be part of the application. The owner will be responsible for completing these forms in Utah Grants this year. So as you start to see your title programs come out, make sure that you're assigning the ownership or the ownership is assigned to the appropriate individual that can complete those forms in Utah Grants. Question?
When I talked to Don, he was like, "Is that eventually the key point of contact would be able to change the owner?"
That's, yes, that is correct. We haven't seen that yet. They've told us that they're going to work, our vendor has told us that they're going to work on that, but it will, we don't want the key point of contact to have to do it either. We just want to get it right the first time around. But yes, right now, I can change ownership. So if you call the hotline, I can change ownership, or eventually, the key point of contact will be able to change ownership. If we get it right the first time, no changes have to be made. Yeah, good question, thank you. Okay, this leads me to what's happening with the UCA. So the UCA will be decommissioned September 30th, 2019. Discussions are ongoing between USBE and our vendor, but our vendor will no longer be supporting the system after September. We're trying to still determine how the system will be maintained and where it will be maintained, and who will have access to the system. The records aren't going away. They're currently on the Board of Education server, but getting access to those records may become difficult after September 30th. So what we are recommending is if you need access to the information in the UCA, that you actually go out and retrieve that information and save it to your own servers or hard drives so that it's easier to get to that information. I can't say at this point, if we know that you're not going to have access to the UCA, regardless, you can always call us and we'll give it to you, but that may be a lengthy process to get that. So in the interim, as we're trying to figure this out, I would recommend that you take some time and go and download or access the information that you do need. And more information will be forthcoming on this as soon as we have it available. We have to work with both our vendor and our IT department to make those determinations on how that's going to work. Okay. MSP allocation, application program reallocations. So we have a few MSP programs that are below, which require applications in Utah Grants prior to receiving your allotment. When those allotments change, either by headcount or factors that we need to adjust your budgets on those MSP programs, a new budget, detailed categorical budget is required. As soon as we give you the new allocation, it flips your award out of an active status into a revised, being revised, status. So you're not going to get on those programs until you've completed that budget revision. It's been through your internal approver and approved by the Board of Education. So please pay attention to those emails as they come through. Make sure that you're adjusting those budgets accordingly and timely. If we do miss getting that done in time for the allotment, you will be paid a next subsequent allotment, there'll be a catch-up payment. Yes?
Just, is there a deadline on those applications? I know my program specialist came in the other day for the AdRes one, and he was freaking out because this wasn't even, I was trying to calm him down. But just so that, as I'm kind of keeping an eye on those, are there deadlines, like the regular applications, you have to have it by this date, or?
Yes, in the system, all applications have a deadline, even if they're the 1/12 of the MSP allocations. However, the revisions, so the revised budget allocations, they don't have a deadline. As soon as you get it turned in and it's approved, your payments will start again. So it's in your benefit to get those done. But the application itself, yes, there's absolutely a deadline.
But if they want to done that, they need to be in by the payment deadline?
Okay, so if you want to be paid for the program in, on that specific allotment, it needs to be submitted by the allotment, the payment due date, to be on that allotment.
Do you guys have a calendar of all the application deadlines, reimbursement due dates, the payings, something we can always refer back to, to show our program directors and say, "Hey, this is what was on these people's..."
Yes and no. I have a calendar for the payment due dates that I believe is on the website. If not, I will make sure it's on the website. So yes, payment due dates, absolutely. The application deadlines, unfortunately, I have so many programs that is ever-changing. So the best, go ahead.
We're trying to work with the vendor to figure out some sort of calendar option in Utah Grants. I'm trying to come up with due dates or approaches that you can tell. How does it look?
Okay. Any other question about due dates? Budget revisions, so just a reminder that in the grant lifecycle from opportunities or sometimes starting with awards, once the, or, sorry, application, opportunities, then applications, once your application is approved, you have an active grant award. Everything you do with that program thereafter will be either in the Grants or the Monitoring tab of the Utah Grant System. So make sure that you're checking on your application pending tasks for any application tasks, or your grant pending tasks for any grant-related items. So an MSP budget reallocation, for example, would be within your grant pending tasks, where you'll see that. So be watching that, just like you've been watching your application. So be watching that, just like you've been watching your application pending tasks. Okay, what's next in Utah Grants? We're working on dashboards and reports. I will be sending out a request for report information, gathering what your needs are for reports, what you would like to see out of the Utah Grant System, so that we can start accumulating what the reporting needs will be. So watch for that. If you want to start preparing a list of the type of reports in the data fields that you need within Utah Grants, please do so. Also, our post-award monitoring activities, as Jamie mentioned, we're still working on progress reports, site visits, risk assessments, and audit documentation and follow-up within the Utah Grant System. So be watching for those in the next coming year as well. Here is how you would get ahold of me or my team. The best way to reach us is at the utangrants@schools.utah.gov email address, or 801-538-7604. Any questions on Utah Grants or grants in general?
So I have three different logins for three different LEAs.
Awesome.
But you can never tell which one you're actually in because there's nowhere on the screen, nor when the emails go to the approver that this is writing through, it says this grant or this LEA. It'd be nice if they could ask if you actually knew which LEA it is, even though...
So I can definitely address the email issue. We know that some of the email content is less than desirable. Sometimes it doesn't look like it was written by someone that speaks the English language. We're working on that. And one of the key elements on the new email content will be the name of your LEA at the top of every email, for people like you that have multiple sign-ins for different schools, right? As far as being able to tell who you are in Utah Grants, how you're logged in, I think I have some ideas that might help. If you click on... In the right-hand corner, there's a little profile picture. You can put your picture there if you want to. It shows your name. I don't know if it shows your organization though. So that might be something I can take back to the vendor and get their feedback on it. That's something we can get some help with.
When you submit a request in the UCA, we were able to print out a summary sheet of that request, and it had the title of the grant on it, and how the request was broken down by category. I can do that, I can print the budget, but there's no identifying information on it as to what brand it is. Is there something missing?
Good feedback. I think that's something that we just need to take back to the vendor, that when we print that, it doesn't have a header on it, a title or date. Okay, good feedback. Are you noting this for me, Tracy?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate this feedback greatly. It helps make Utah Grants better for everybody. Any other questions? Oh.
One more. At this point, not be you, because it's not in the system. So let's say there's four approver levels on a particular reimbursement request, and approver three is out of the office for a week, and it just halts everything. Is there a way to look, put them out of office and then skip to the next approver or skip to someone else?
I have to be perfectly honest that this is a portion of the system that's driving us insane, because it doesn't have that functionality. And any organization has people that come and go, or go on vacation, and we need workflows to continue. So it is a requirement that we have given the vendor that we need to be able to reassign those tasks when someone is out of the office. It is on their to-do list, and it is part of our statement of work, and we are getting it done. I can't give you an ETA on that, unfortunately, but I hear your concern. It's our concern too.
Once a grant has awarded and shows up in our grants list, we're able to assign an ID number, a local ID number for that grant. We use our program number in combination with location as our identifier for that grant. It would be helpful if our internal identifier number appeared on virtually every string that lists your identifier number.
Right. Let me take that back to my vendor and see if there's a field that we can utilize that can show us that information. From the rest of the group, is that something that would be a helpful thing, to have a unique identifier available on those grants? Seeing a few head nods. Okay. Okay, noted. Currently, no, but I will... I'll bring it back to the vendor, see what we can do. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Would it adjust the weekly type of email?
The link... Oh. Tracy was just mentioning that sometimes the emails go out with a link. Click here to go to the program. The links do not always work and are not trustworthy. So that's part of what we are working through as we're updating all of the email information, is to make sure that those are correct. So if your link takes you to the wrong place, just go where you need to go to approve the information that's contained in the email. Please.
I know there's maybe a list of 10 or 15 grants. Is it possible to have a colored one that we have to do something with?
Right.
So we don't have to do something with all of them?
Correct. That's another piece of our contract that's on our RFP, or our contract statement of work with the vendor. Because as you go to that monitoring tab, you see all of your grants, and you see all of the MSP programs commingled with our federal programs, for example. And we don't need to do drawdowns or reimbursement requests on those. So there... It would be nice to have a way to sort those, or to see just the ones that require action. So again, yes, we've heard that before too. In fact, it's hard for us to find things on that screen. So we've asked the vendor to help us fix that. Okay. All right. You know where I live if you have questions. Thank you.
All right, good afternoon.
You didn't respond to that online.
Okay. So I'm Cole Shakespeare. I'm over the state funds for special ed. I also do the MOE calculation. I've just barely completed it, and I have reached out to some of you that for extra work, extra documentation I need to make sure everybody meets it. So far, pretty much everybody is good, met it. If not, I have reached out and contacted you about that. We got a new calculator worksheet for everybody this year. So I had lots of fun transferring all the old information to new ones. 160 spreadsheets, plus making new ones. So I worked on like 500 spreadsheets for you guys for this, for this year.
Thank you.
So it was lots of fun. It had errors. I almost threw my computer through windows and stuff. It's no big deal. So yeah, MOE. I think the biggest thing I'd want to talk about for you guys is that when you're doing your budgets each year, and partway through the year, probably mid-year or something, just keep your MOE in mind. Look back at what you spent the last year, the amount you need to meet for this current year, and just make sure you're going to meet that, rather than waiting till year-end and scrambling to do some journal entries and stuff to make sure that you meet it. So as you're doing your budget each year, just keep it in mind and kind of set your budgets accordingly, and then check up on it throughout the year. That is one of the things we ask about as well, if we come to do a fiscal monitor visit. So yeah, we just recommend you guys do that, make it part of your budgeting process. As you know, you have to meet MOE in one of the four categories. They can switch between categories every year, as long as you meet one of them. That's great. In a perfect world, you would meet all four, just so that everything works out. But it's not a big deal if it doesn't all meet the one. And if you don't, I'll reach out, like I said, and we'll see if any of these five exceptions apply to you. The most common one that works is if you had turnover with special ed directors, special ed teachers or something, and you bring in new teachers or directors that cost less money. So you spent less money that following year. I just get some information from you for the expenses for those, and take the difference, and we can usually make people meet. So it's really not that hard. Usually works out pretty well. So yeah, I think that should be it for MOE. Like I said, we take care of it, and if there's issues, we'll contact you.
Good afternoon. My name's Neil Stevens. I'm the IDA Fiscal Program Manager. So everything IDA, I handle from the monitoring visits to your local schools, through your applications that come through Utah Grants, to some other monitoring activities that we do. So I'm going to talk about excess costs. So excess costs, it's the basis of allowable for IDA grants. Basically states, the theory is that all students are general ed students first, and then they become specialized students. And that being said, that all expenditures for all students, including special ed students, must meet a minimum threshold prior to accessing the special ed federal grant. So we have a test. It's done every year as part of the IDA application. We send it a spreadsheet to you guys, fill out and complete, determine what the average per pupil expenditure is, and determine if you met that overall expenditure level. If you have not met that expenditure level, then the difference between your requirement and what you actually spent will result in a payback to OSEP, the Office of Special Education, at the federal level. Now, we don't want anybody to have to pay any money back. So we are working hard to help LEAs understand this process, understand what goes into it. So every year, we provide you a spreadsheet with a... With instructions on how to complete it. So the instructions, you need three documents. So Cole, can you bring that spreadsheet up? Why is pulling up here? I can list the documents. So we're going to need a fiscal... The prior fiscal year expenditures. We're going to need the ADM count, and we're going to need the Summer One Child count for your school. So go to the part one, Cole. Okay, so here's the spreadsheet, what it looks like. And so first, you notice there's two columns here. There's a elementary column and a secondary column. And 34 CFR 300, which is the Regulations for IDA, it states that we must calculate the expenditures on a elementary and secondary basis. In Utah, that is defined as elementary is grades K through six, and secondary is grades seven through 12. Many of the schools this year, there's a change, were required to make adjustments to their initial excess cost spreadsheet, because they put all of their expenses in elementary, even though they may be a K through eight or K through nine school. So I made a lucky one happen, asked them to fix that, and allow that... If you're a charter school, one location that has secondary elementary students in the same location, you're allowed to complete this calculation on proportion basis. Meaning if you have 100 students, and seven of those students are elementary, and 30 are secondary, you would proportionate those costs based on those percentages in this spreadsheet. If you're a district and you have schools that are mixed, say you have a junior high, and it actually starts... Or, sorry, a middle school starts at grade six, and that's still elementary, you can apply the same calculation there. So what we want to do is we want to find the expenditures, all expenditures, out of your AFR. And you're going to enter these in in column in Part A. All the expenditures from state funds, local funds, and federal funds. And then we're going to back out all these parts in Part C. You're going to back out IDA funds, Title I funds, Title III funds. We're also going to back out special ed funds provided by the state. I'm going to come up with a subtotal, and that subtotal is going to be in line 21 in columns C and D. And then we're going to figure out the total ADM per student. So we're going to divide number of students we have by that subtotal to calculate per student basis. And then we're going to figure out how many of those kids are special ed. And we're going to multiply that per student calculation by number of special ed kids in your school. That is going to determine how much money you are required to spend on specialization prior to accessing federal IDA funds per reimbursement basis. What we do after you get that number is we go to your following year... This is using fiscal data from two years prior. So last year, we used fiscal data from fiscal 17 to determine these expenditures. Going forward, we would compare fiscal 18 to what is on the spreadsheet. And we go through, and we would look at all your funds that you have spent money on. And so the procedure for that is, we want to look at... Let's see here. I have a new document here that I'll share with you guys later on, an email that explains our procedure, so you have an idea of what we are doing. So what we would do is the following fiscal year, in this case fiscal year 18, we would look at all your expenditures in your APR for Schedule A, General Education; Schedule B, Special Education; Schedule C, CTE; Schedule D, Special Populations; Schedule H, Restricted State/Federal Bills; Schedule I, One-Time Bills; Schedule J, Non-Instructional; and Schedule L, No Child Left Behind. We add up all the expenditures, and multiply by percent of special ed students in your school to come up with what you spent in that year. We compare the previous... The amounts on the spreadsheet compared to that calculation. And as long as the calculation for that year is greater than on the spreadsheet, you have met excess costs. If it's less than what's on those two figures, you potentially would owe money back. Now, we're not going to say, just based on that calculation, you owe us money and here's how much. We'll come out to the school, and we'll review the detailed fiscal data to make sure what's reported in the APR and AFR is accurate. And if there are inaccuracies in your favor, we'll correct those, and you won't owe money. If there is... If it is correct, we'll work with the LEA on repayment schedule, how much to repay, and all those. This is a federal requirement. This is not something that is optional, or that the USBE board dreamed up to make you guys' lives harder. Or my life either. So this in a nutshell is how we need to work at excess costs. Do we have any questions? Great, you guys know everything. Okay.
Can you send us what you're using to compare the two? So I know you just said it, but so we can actually kind of run a test ourselves?
Yes.
Make sure we're okay.
So I have a detailed procedure document I'll send out to everybody. Oh. The question was, is can they be... Can I send out a procedure document, what my procedure will be, so the LEAs can do a test prior to completing this work for this coming year, and know what they're getting into? So I will. So now on to our next topic. It's going to be time and effort. Hopefully, everybody here knows what time and effort is, and has some sort of system and process for time and effort. We're talking about this now because we have had quite a bit of... In our monitoring visits we've done this year, we did 25 monitoring visits. Time and effort, compliance has come up a number of times as being not compliant or borderline compliance. So we want to make sure that we have an understanding of what we need to do. So for federal funds, we need to keep track of individuals paid with federal funds, what they are doing. And we have some sort of certification for that. Previously, we had the A133 and A87 guidance. It was pretty specific. It says, "Do this, this much time on this information." Well, then they came out with the New Uniform Guidance 2 CFR 200. And in Section 430, it says, "Have a system internal controls." That's pretty wide open. And it's pretty wide open on the LEA side, and it's also wide open on the state board side of what it looks like a system internal controls. Now, in our 277-1136, it talks about internal controls and what it should compromise of. For time and effort, we kind of define that on a little more detailed basis. So we expect there to be a... Some certification for people paid with federal funds of how... Of how they are... Sorry, let me back up. A detailed acknowledgement that I am paid with federal funds, I've done this activity, and employee signature, at the very least. Excuse me. If you're paid with federal and state funds, we expect that there's detail that also, "I am paid with federal funds from this for IDA or for Title, and I'm paid with state funds out of these categories," and acknowledgement by the employee, that is what is happening. Absent that, and we've... And we've visited, a new monitoring visit, and that has occurred, we will request other detailed documentation to back that up. If the documentation is not available, it becomes a question cost. And we would require payment, either state or federal funds for which we're in question, back. We don't want that to happen.
What if all of our... Our support is electronic?
The question was, what if all the approvals are electronic? And the answer is, electronic signatures are okay. But does these be signatures in place there?
Does it work if they're using a different code? Like if they're half-general Ed, they...
Like if they're half general ed, they punch in with the code, and if they're doing a special ed, they punch in with a different code? Because I don't know whether we've done the sign, but that's what we've done.
Yeah, electronic time clocks where you're logging into a specific program that has a program code that's acceptable, because then if we would ask for apparel detail, that would have those codes on those times clock in, clock out. That is actually, excuse me, that is actually the preferred method. If your LE has the ability to do that, we would prefer that because that provides detailed records rather than this someone signing their name to a testament saying, yes, I worked here. This actually provides records of what they are doing.
Just quickly, can you put your lines emailing us this information?
So I believe Janie included this, it's included in the presentation package.
Yesterday, sometime yesterday, I think I emailed this one out. I will also post everything online.
So another thing about the uniform guidance, it doesn't provide specific timeframes like the previous guidance did, like you must do this this often. The state board's preference or special ed's preference is that you provide individuals who are paid with one funding source, in this case IDA funds, are, provide some sort of testation or signed documentation at least twice a year. Quarterly, preferable, I'm not going to say monthly because that's too much work for you guys. On the other side of that is if they're paid with more than one funding source, so if they're paid with a special ed add-on or Impact Aid and federal funds, it can be done at least quarterly. That way, we have a, we can match up on your payroll records to what is actually charged on reimbursement basis on a, at a easy, easy manner. Yes.
So when you do the reimbursement request through the Utah Grants, shouldn't you just include the part if you can?
If you can, I would not require any. I've been told, I've been told that to require that of all schools all the time, we require a board rule. We don't have one. However, that's a good question, it's a follow-up question. If, you guys may not be aware, but your special ed directors receive a risk score based on their program. It's called an RDA score, one through five. One is the least risky, five is the most risky. If your program received a four or five on that score, you'll be required to send in supporting documentation with your reimbursement requests in Utah Grants.
The number one is this?
Yes. Yes. And I will be sending an email out to all the special ed directors and business administrators later this month about that requirement. That requirement will take place beginning July 1. So I guess, quick question, you know, who needs to have time and effort? If you're paid with federal funds, you have to have time and effort regardless. If you're paid only with state funds, we don't have a requirement that you have time and effort. However, if they're paid with state funds, you have to have some sort of documentation that justifies charging them to special education. And just because someone has a teaching license in special ed or a Cactus assignment is not sufficient. We need to see favorable contract that has an assignment of special education or other detailed information that's showing that they're providing services in special education. Otherwise, we're into a situation of question costs. You might be looking at, do they have lesson plans? Which students are they serving? Are they signing up on service records? And we prefer not to go down that route. If we have the required or the preferred records upfront, it makes the monitoring process go that much faster and simpler. We have any questions? Great. Give your time.
Next up is the Child Nutrition Program. So I will turn it over to them. If you could kindly take your seats and cease your conversations, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome, everybody. I'm Kathleen Britton, the State Agency Director, and we have with me Kim Loveland, who's handing out papers, who's over the school section, and we also have Michelle Martin in the school section, and we have Scott Eddy in the back there with the microphone, and he's over the finance part. So we've kind of broken this up a little bit. But first, I wanted to start with letting everybody know, just a little reminder about the liquor tax closeout, that you need to make sure you work with your food service people to get in all their claims by July 5th if they want to get closeout on those meals. Any emails submitted after that will not be reimbursed with the liquor tax. You'll still get your federal reimbursement, but you won't get your state money. Another reminder, and we'll talk about it a little bit later, is the state money. That money can all, is restricted funds, and it can only be used as an allowable program cost. It cannot be used as unrestricted. Lastly, is a permanent agreement. We sent out a new permanent agreement last year, and about a third of our sponsors had the director sign it and not the business administrator or the superintendent. So if you haven't signed that agreement, you will be receiving a new one to sign because it has to be the legal authority for the district, not just for the program. Because the permanent agreement is with the district, not with the school food service director, because the school or the charter has other responsibilities besides the child nutrition feeding part of it. The school is responsible for the wellness policy and the smart snack. So therefore, that's why we're having you guys sign off on that. So if you do get one shortly, we'll be sending those out. We'll need you to do an e-electronic signature, and then we'll send them back to us. So first, we're going to start with the revenues. So as you can see, the revenues that come in are restricted, come in your resources in, sorry, let me, all your revenues received from the Child Nutrition Program, those are included in your meals that you receive, your à la cartes, and your catering, and your earnings on investments, and your state revenue, which is your liquor tax money. So all of that revenue is restricted, so that can only be used back in the school lunch program for staffing and for maintenance and operation of that program. The expenditures for the lunch program, you need to remember that those, what the allowable expenditures are and what the allowable expenditures are. So as you can see, food is allowable and your direct related costs destroying that, your labor. The things that are not, that we've noticed, is when we do entertainment, which is such as travel, you need to make sure whatever travel they have is relevant to the C and P program. Because we do come in and look at all of this during our resource management and our AR part of it, which Kim will discuss later. The other thing that we need to bring to your attention is the time and effort. So if you have an employee that also does stuff in the office or as an aide, all that time has to be coded separately. So it has to show what percentage they're doing for child nutrition, what percentage they're doing for the front office, what percentage they're doing for classroom aide. It can't be all come out of child nutrition. The other thing that we noticed was some of the travel, time and effort, and purchasing equipment. So you need to make sure the equipment that is purchased is an allowable piece of equipment and work with our office if you're not familiar with what is not allowable. And the equipment needs to be tagged afterwards that it belongs to the C and P program. So then I'm going to pass it off to Michelle. She's going to talk about the nonprofit status and net cash. But before I do, does anybody have any questions on their revenue and expenditures for the Child Nutrition Program?
Okay, so we wanted to take a few minutes to talk about net cash resources and then indirect costs, because we know that some of you probably received notifications recently from our office about whether or not you exceeded those limits. So we want to walk you through exactly what we do, and please know that we do look at this annually. That's one of our requirements. The first one, you have to almost eat it. Oh, thanks. If you can't hear me also, please let me know. But the first one we wanted to go over was net cash resources. So this slide just basically goes over the very basics. The fund balance or the net cash resources, the account must not exceed three months' average expenditures because it's a nonprofit food service account. We look at your excess balance and determine whether it's too high or not. And then if it is too high, you have to supply a spend down plan to our office, something we want to make sure that you're aware of. A lot of people will quickly respond and say like, this is our plan, and just write a statement in correspondence to it. We are not allowed to accept statements of assurance as far as like what your plan is going to be. So we need plans that are detailed enough that we can hold you accountable to them. So typically, we'll look for things, A, that are really specific, B, if you've got deadlines in there, something that you can update us on if we needed progress reports, if USDA asks us for those, would be something to include in those plans. If you have questions about what those should look like, please make sure to either contact Scott, you can contact myself, Kim, or Kathleen. And of course, know that we do reviews annually per local requirement. To let know how it has kind of progressed for net cash resources, we did do a slightly different calculation this year than we have in previous years, depending on your LEA. And I'll get to the details in a second. But we wanted to point out and be as clear as we can about what was done in the past, what was done this year, and then what we're moving toward as far as this calculation is considered. So in the past, we used your APR that you submit through UPFs, and then this slide just outlines the steps for what we, how we calculated that. So I know you can read this, but we pulled the subtotal expenditures, just divided it by the number of months of operation. Please know that we use nine across the board right now as the standard, but some of your schools do operate summer programs, so that could change down the line to include more months. Just know that now. But we do use nine at the moment. And then you take the total from that, the total from that equals your maximum allowed reserve. We pull your subtotal revenue and expenditures from that APR, and then compare that maximum allowed reserve total to your subtotal revenue and expenditures. If you're greater than that, it's out of compliance, which means you have to supply us with a spend down plan. So again, that was previous years. This one, the next one I want to show you, is the one we used for program year 1718. So it was calculated differently for charters and districts because we have different data points for each in the AFR and the APR and how they're, how it's currently being reported. We want to move all LEAs toward the method we used for districts this year, and I'll outline both of those in the coming slides. And we just wanted to point out, A, that we identified reporting inconsistencies that we'll talk to you about in a second. And also, we did have an internal error when we actually ran this report. So some people did contact us and say, hey, I'm not really over my balance, can you explain to me what happened? So we're going to go over exactly what happened, just so everybody is on the same page. So just to point out, for 1718, what happened with charters, it was basically those, not basically, it was the same steps that you saw on the previous slide. So we used the same method we used in previous years for the current year for charters, just because they, the data was not available in the AFR for some of the charter schools. Let's see if there's anything else. So, oh, and then if we can get the data points that we need for next year from charter schools, we are going to move towards the steps that you're going to see in the next slide that we used for districts this year. So this year, when we did the calculation for districts, we used the APR and the AFR. This walks you through exactly what we did as far as part one. Part one is the same as before, but part two, we ended up pulling your total fund balance from the AFR and compared that maximum allowed reserve AFR total for Fund 49. And when we pulled that, that's when we recognized that 9860 was not considered in the calculation we initially did when we sent out notifications to people. So some people, we needed to take that out of the calculation to make sure it was accurate. So we adjusted those, but if that is somebody in this room and you have questions about it and you haven't contacted Scott yet, please let us know. And then the other thing we wanted to point out though, too, is we were going through that and double checking calculations, some LEs did not report anything in 9860, and it seems a little bit odd that you wouldn't have any food inventory at the end of the year. So if you've got questions about that, too, we welcome your feedback. Kim will be collecting some stuff later, but that's something to keep in mind, that we will be looking for that down the line. So moving forward, this is the calculation we'll be using, basically. And if we have that data, again, for charters, we will use it also. We'd like to make sure that we've, we're using the same calculation for everybody. Know that if, if 9860 is blank, you might be hearing from us to find out exactly what's going on in the future. Yeah, please.
Back to the excess fund balance. Over what time can you do a spend down plan? Is there a set period? Is that over one, two, three years, a few months? What's the, what's the time?
Yeah. Depends on where you're at with the, with the three months. It is in regulation, is that even working, both of them? Okay. It is in regulation that that should be monitored by the LEA. So depending on where you're at, and we would work with you as needed. It needs to be reasonable. We need to try to get that down as soon as we can, but if it needs to expand over a year, we will do that. But we want to try to avoid that if we can at the, at the start.
I started with glory, it's your person.
That was noted, too. I think part of, part of the reason it's going to be on a case by case basis, too, is because the fund balances vary significantly as far as like how much people have in excess from one LEA to the next. So that's, that will be something that we have to consider when those spend down plans come in. Some people could be looking at $100,000 and some people are looking at millions of dollars. So that will, I mean, it'll just depend on kind of what the, what the plan is for that money. Does anybody else have any questions about net cash and excess fund balances? Okay. The next thing we wanted to go over was indirect costs and just lay out as clear as we could exactly what's happening with indirect costs and how we're calculating that. We do use the APR for all LEAs, and then we wanted to be explicit about which object codes we are taking out of your subtotal expenditures when we are trying to determine what you have indicated you charge as indirect costs compared to what is allowable for indirect costs. So make sure you're using or referencing this slide when you determine what your allowable costs are. And then, of course, we use the unrestricted rate when we are completing this calculation also. And then we just compare what you've reported and what is allowed, and if you are over, you have to use, or excuse me, use unrestricted funds or some type of general fund to make sure that the food service account is whole, I hope. Does that make sense? Okay. Does anybody have any questions about indirect cost calculations at all? Yes.
This slideshow is not the same as this, right?
Correct. Yeah.
We're going to down that out or?
Those, these slides are going to be.
They were sent out. They were sent out.
So they should be available. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to turn the time over to Kim to go over the handout that you received. Hello, so my name's Kim Loveland. You should have two handouts. One is a feedback form for us. If you have questions, suggestions, passes, whatever you want, that will help us moving into our next review cycle, feel free to put those on this document here. The packet that you received is a working document that we're working on. I would like to compile a user-friendly C and P finance manual, and you prepare for your reviews and also help you meet program requirements as far as financial management goes. So a couple of things I want to just highlight really quick. We are closing up our reviews from this school year. We conducted 52 administrative reviews, and we also completed 28 procurement reviews this year. And so those are just wrapping up with the final few. Michelle, we'll be sending out a survey regarding those reviews here in the next couple of weeks. So if you could supply us with your feedback on what worked but didn't work, things we can improve on with our team in training them and getting them ready to go. Next year, 2020, we'll start our new review cycle with USDA. We put in a waiver request with USDA to extend that three-year cycle to a five-year cycle, just to give us a little bit of breathing room for you and us as we work through this new review process. So that is a 60-day review through USDA, and we're hoping to get that in June. So we'll let you know as soon as we.
On your calendars, you might want to note that we will be doing administrative review training September 4th and 11th, and we will send out information on that here in the next, let's say, month as we gear up. And we do encourage you to attend that training with your food service directors. It will go through the process of how we conduct that review, notifications that will be sent, and information that will be covered during that review process. Again, the dates are September 4th and September 11th for that. We will also be working with Brett to develop some focus groups. We mentioned this at the USBO conference. If you're interested in that, let us know. We'll like to break this document down in different pieces and get input from you and see what we can do to make, to make this better. So, if you're interested in that, contact myself or Michelle, and we can start working on that. One other thing that is out in the grant management system is the 18 equipment grant. We've only received a couple of responses to that. We do not want to send any money back to USDA. You know, we have a couple hundred thousand dollars for the 18 equipment grant, and then we'll be issuing a 19 equipment grant as well. So, if you need to replace equipment, need new equipment, please apply for those grants. It's there for the taking. So, we encourage you to look at that, and your contact for those grants would be Chris Bruin in our office. As was mentioned before, and just kind of highlighting a few things in this document, we don't want to take too much of your time. You guys have had a long day today. But when we do the resource management portion of the administrative review, we're looking at the most recently closed-out year. And so, for us, we're working with two years usually. You'll be two years back up and through December, and then after we receive certified reports on the APR and AFR from Financial Operations, we'll switch over to the, to the prior year, and that usually happens in about January. As Michelle mentioned, when we do reviews, there is a lot of back and forth. There's an e-review module that we've been utilizing fully this year, which will be new for some of you, and we'll provide training at that AR, training on using that system, but it works pretty slick, because you can see what the questions are, you answer your questions in that module, and then you can also upload any corrective action or supporting documentation for that. As Michelle's mentioned earlier, you can have statements of assurance, so we have to have game plan, you know, who, where, why, when, and how, on how things will be corrected. And also, with the resource management portion of the review, considered a general area, so if there are fiscal findings in regards to that, it's usually just an inter-agency transfer, whether there was an unallowable cost charged, if there was double-dipping due to the indirect cost calculations, that type of a thing, that will just be inside in your LEA and food service account. So, that's how that portion works. I also want to point out that it's really important, as we're doing the exit conference with administrative review, that you let us know, you know, we have to set, we have pre-set due dates of when things have to happen with this review process outlined by USDA, but if there's a major conflict, you know, let us know, and we can kind of work with you on some of these things, depending on what's going on in the world. We need to make sure that everything is satisfied with corrective action by the established due date, otherwise, we are required to withhold program funds to the child nutrition programs, all that is satisfied, and we only process claims once a month, so that could put some of you in a bind if that was the case. And we don't like doing that, if we can avoid that. In this document, too, if you have feedback, I kind of bolded some difference. In each section, there's a part that says documentation needed. On page two, it says statement of revenues and expenses. So, if there's other documentation pieces that you're using that would satisfy this section, we would like your feedback on that, too. We want to make sure we're talking the same talk that, that you're using. And all this information was pulled from either our AR review manual that we have to use, supplied by USDA, or the forms, and so that's where most of this information came from. So, if there are pieces in here that are unclear, or if you're reading it a little bit different, questions about it, let us know, so that address as we move into the new review cycle. The other thing, we just want to make sure, general accounting practices, that all expenses to the program are sufficiently documented. We do just at higher level, look at things, and then if there's triggers or concerns, then we have to dive in deeper and deeper. And so, just want to make sure that everything's accounted for correctly. Michelle went over the three months and the indirect costs. That information is in this document as well, for your reference. The overarching regulations for our program, we are federally funded, so we've got UCFR 200s that you're familiar with, but then we also have our own individual program regulations. And believe it or not, child nutrition does not, every program has its own reg, and some are just a little bit different in some different ways. So, we did try to identify the different regulations. This is specifically to the school lunch program, this, this document here, and it does apply mostly to the breakfast program, after-school program, and the seamless summer program, but we do have different regulations if you're participating in the regular summer program or the child and adult care program. But one of the overarching things is, you know, just make sure that as expenses are being charged against the account, they are reasonable, they are necessary, and they are allocable for the program to function and operate. That's what it all boils down to. The other thing that USDA has emphasized over the past few years is your equipment purchases. If you turn on page eight of this document, there's information on definition of equipment, what that means. There's also an equipment preapproval list that we supply as a state office that was approved by our regional office, and the link for that is on page eight. And then, if you need something that's not on that list, and there will be a Google form that can be submitted to request approval for that equipment. So, I just wanted to highlight that for you. Going to page 10, the pay lunch equity, that is currently being done by Kate Wheeler in her office. We do that at the state level on behalf of the school food authorities, and so, she's been in contact with the food service directors on completing that tool. Once that tool is completed, then she will send the final version of that tool to generally the food service director. They'll just need to keep that documentation, but that determines if prices need to be raised or lower, or raised, I should say. But most of you are already covered because you're receiving so much money in state funds, that that usually covers the difference in raising lunch prices. And our schools are very, very lucky to get the amount of funding that they, they get compared to other states, so we just want to make sure that that is being used responsibly. Revenue from non-programmed foods, that was on page 12. That was probably one of our most common findings that we had throughout this last review cycle. Hopefully, the information on these couple of pages kind of helps clarify some of those questions that you might have in regards to non-programmed food tool, and that will be a collaborative, collaborative effort between finance and the school food service director as far as getting those, the backup documentation to do the calculation. And the calculation is actually a ratio, and you'll find that on page 15 of this document. Okay, so, any general questions that any of you have as far as the resource management part of the review? Okay. If you have comments, you can fill those out now, and we can collect them, or if you would like to email, this is all available on, they receive this electronically, correct? So, if you have feedback, you can submit it to us electronically as well. Thank you very much.
All right, welcome. All right. Okay, well, I'm excited to be here. First of all, I want to thank Jamie, she's been really supportive. We really wanted to get an introduction to transportation. One of the things we're trying to accomplish is to make sure that everyone is following all the, all the laws and requirements for student transportation, because they're in place for a reason, they're in place for safety, and we, we care about the kids that we transport. While we get started, I want you guys to, if you have your phones or your computers out, if you haven't been given an invitation from me, an email from me for transportation, if you would just send me your contact information while I introduce myself. So, I'm Ron Litchfield, I'm the State Transportation Specialist here at the State Board of Education. I've been in, I actually started as a, as a technician. I've been working on equipment for about 20 years. I went back to school, I've got a couple bachelor degrees that brought me in toward management. At that point, I became a director at Morgan School District for five years, and that was a lot of fun and really rewarding for me. Just a little, a year and a half ago, applied at the State Board of Education as a transportation specialist here, and received that, and it's, it's been a big adjustment. I've constantly been out in the shop. Now, I'm stuck behind a desk, and it's, there are things I miss, there's things that I do like. So, one of the benefits I have is, working for the state, is I get to meet so many people. I also get to be a mentor and help people, and I really enjoy solving problems as a mechanic. We solve problems all the time, and I get that opportunity now on a, on a bigger scale, and it's been really rewarding, and I can't say that I've had a day that seems repetitive. We're constantly working on new materials, and, and this presentation has been really exciting for me. To start out this presentation, the goal of the presentation was to give you guys an introduction to student transportation. Student transportation is really complex, and we're, we're really governed by so many different entities. We have, we have national laws and regulations, we have different departments in national, we have our Highway Safety Administration, we have OSHA, we have our state laws.
He's got one, he's unable to get to the form, it says that you have to be shared by the owner.
Because you need permission.
Okay, we'll correct that at the end. Sorry.
And that only needs to be filled out by charter schools, right? Or you want you to have charter's and district's to pull that out?
Yeah, as, if, if they, if I don't have their contact, if I haven't sent them anything, I would like their contact still.
Transportation contacts or business administrators or what?
It identifies the education entity, so I can be able to separate that.
Can you give your contact email?
The link?
Your announcements, you can say, please put it on your list.
Yeah, and I have my contact information at the very end of the presentation as well. So, we're covered by several state laws. In addition to our state laws, we have our administrative rules, and so, we're going to be covering some of those as well. Beyond that, you guys are going to have your own policies, which may be stricter than any of the previous. So, the first thing I'd like to point out is this is our national school bus standards. Let's see, John, can you pass that out? Those out? And then, we'll get to those in just a minute. So, the national standards is a 520-page document. This document covered, covers so many different topics in transportation, anything you can almost think of is covered in this document. Some of the topics that we have, I've got them posted here. What I've done is, I've got John over here passing out the table of contents to the national standards, and I've also got three copies of our state standards, so you can look at those as we go through this presentation. But if you look at these topics, I, I suggest that you guys get familiar with the national standards. Like I said, the majority of the questions I receive, I go back and I find the reference in the national standards and share that back with the education agency. Second, we have our state standards. Our state standards, they were, I believe, a 63-page standard with a 50-page appendix. This 2019 edition is only 27 pages. The way we got, did that is Merrell Martin, he was my predecessor, he was on the National Committee, and he worked on updating the 2015 national standards. Those standards, much of our state standards were included word-for-word in the national standards. So, our latest edition of our state standards was removing any duplication, and we also tried to make it a electronic usable document. So, the document, this document is full of electronic links, it's meant to be electronic. We reference different best practices or laws and trainings within this document for you guys. This, also, I'll be sending this PowerPoint out once I correct some of the links, but if you were to highlight your mouse over most of the pictures or references, it will link you to those sites. So, this is also intended to be a good resource for you guys beyond this presentation. Okay, the next thing I want to talk about is our bus requirements. And I tried to simplify this presentation into just some of the basics. Ultimately, our bus requirements, our new school buses need to meet the current national and state standards. A used school bus needs to meet the national and state standards for that year of school bus. What that means is, with our older buses, if we buy one from out of state, it may not meet all the state requirements. Utah has a few things, few heightened requirements for, for our school buses that we felt made our state safer. I'm going to talk just a second on our school bus safety features. Here, we have a pretty comprehensive list of features that, for the most part, aren't on any other vehicle. We have anchored seating and compartmentalization. Compartmentalization is engineered design to help distribute impact for the student into the seat back in front of them. It's padded, it absorbs that impact, and it's been a proven design for safety. Another feature about the school bus I don't have listed is their incredible weight. We have buses up to 36,000 pounds. Most that you'll see will be the, around the 26,000 pounds, so compartmentalization works. The couple areas where we are, have, do still have concerns is, anytime you have a wreck where there's a rollover, or there's a wreck with a vehicle of equal weight, you know, when you put 5,000, 6,000 pounds of students onto a bus, that outweighs most cars on the road and trucks. So, incredibly safe. We have a couple of the features that we've adopted, I think the Kentucky Pole Test. I've got some pictures on my computer of non-school buses that have hit some of the highway poles, and you see the highway pole three-quarters through the bus, really disturbing image. We've adopted the Kentucky Pole Test after a big accident. It's designed to make the bus safer in a crash against a pole. The Colorado Rack and Load Test was designed by Colorado in 1971. We adopted that into our state standards. That Rack and Load Test is designed for rollover protection. It added more strength to a rollover, it's supposed to, I don't remember the number, absorb so many pounds, support the vehicle weight in rollover, and, and really strengthen the bus. Not all states have adopted the Colorado Rack and Load Test yet. Okay, this next graphic talks about our fatalities during school bus. Okay, this next graphic talks about our fatalities during school bus hours. Right here, we're less than 1% for school bus fatalities. This graphic shows us that it is one of the safest vehicles on the road. Of that 1%, often, one accident will result in the majority of fatalities. So we've had some dangerous rollovers, we've had U-turns on the highway where they were hit by vehicles of equal weight or higher, and those instances really took the bulk of that 1%. I think, a few of the years, we were down to .04%, you know, so very small number on some years. Okay, this code here, Utah Code 538-S211.5. An educational agency may not use a vehicle with a seating capacity of 11 or more, including the driver, for transportation of students unless the vehicle meets the federal, federal school bus safety standards. That means you can't use an 11-passenger van for transporting students to school on activity and field trips. So it has to be classified as a school bus, built on a school bus chassis. It needs to have those safety features we talked about in the previous slides. So vehicles greater than 16 passengers, including the driver, require CDL. Many of our LEAs have activity buses, they're buses that meet the school bus safety standards, they're often painted white rather than yellow, and don't have the eight-way loading lights for students. We have a few of the passenger, the 15-passenger activity bus, to where the drivers do not need the CDA license. So that's, we're seeing more and more districts, LEAs, go to an activity bus.
I have a question about that. They have the new board transit that's just come out, that's 10-passenger, are you going to have the same body type? Is that allowable then?
Yeah, so the question was, if there is a 10-passenger vehicle made by the manufacturer, if that was acceptable? Even though they've just changed the seating arrangement to make it a 10-passenger. And there are a couple options available, and those are eligible, they are eligible under that rule. Okay, from our national standards, we have suggested items for school bus maintenance. So we have a line setting ticket. A line setting ticket is really the build of the bus, it's the specifications that the bus came with from the manufacturer. This is important. I remember as a mechanic working on a school bus and trying to get these brake parts to go on the bus, and it just didn't look right to me. And even though I took off the parts, got the part numbers, and put the same piece back on, it didn't look right. I went back to the line setting ticket and found out that it took a different brake. To me, you know, that was very important, especially that day, because I was able to ensure that that bus is safety and the safety of those students by making sure I put on the original manufacturer parts. We like, we recommend having work orders and repair orders. Those should include your mileages, your vehicle number. You ought to keep your preventative maintenance records, suggest the vehicle depreciation, and our inspection reports.
Ron?
Yeah?
What about first bed? Our local school district has a few 15-passenger vans for the past three or four years.
Unless they meet that school bus safety standards, they are not to be used. So the question was, we have had people that have been using vehicles that aren't allowed under the 11-passenger rule, and so just clarification that those vehicles are not to be used. There's a Utah law that prevents us from using anything over 11-passenger, including the driver, for student transportation. This is activity and field trip, this is to and from school, so we'll have to look for some different options. So let's talk about our CDL requirements. CDL requirements, you must have a commercial driver's license to operate, any single vehicle with a gross vehicle weight of 26,000 pounds or more, a vehicle designed to transport 16 or more students, or passengers. You're required to have a Class B CDL with passenger and school bus endorsements to drive a school bus with 16 passengers or more. So the school bus endorsement would be required for any school bus vehicle. This would not apply to the activity bus. My next section is driver requirements. We have a driver shortage in the state, and I wish we could hire every bus driver, but we do background checks. We check for criminal convictions. Hang on, I need my notes. I should know Darth Vader's history pretty well, but... We check for the illegal use and possession of weapons. We check for reports of violence, and there is something about, you have to have possession and use of both hands, and I think there was one episode where he was disqualified Okay, so in our state standards, we have two pages on bus driver qualifications. We cover different topics there, I mentioned a few earlier. I have a link right here where you can look at our state standards. My first question on a bus driver interview is reading those standards, or those qualifications, those two pages, and I ask them if there was yes or no, is there any reason you would be disqualified from becoming a bus driver? If they say yes, we proceed with the interview. If no, or they have questions, we can address those. But that was always my first question. We do background checks, we check our driver history, criminal convictions, we put them through a post-offered drug test. We have physical requirements for a bus driver. We have a physical assessment that they'll perform for their job. We also have, we require them to fill out a drug disclosure form that identifies the medications that they're using, that are prescribed by a doctor. Some of those medications may say, "Do not use within eight hours of driving," and that would be stated on that form and signed by the doctor. So we have another law for CDLs, is you have to have a DOT medical physical, and that occurs at least every two years. There may be some instances where you would have 30-day, or 90-day, or every year, physical assessment, no, excuse me, physical examination by a medical doctor, DOT medical doctor. We require bus drivers to maintain certification requirements. That means staying up to date on their instruction, and every CDL driver is to be enrolled in So this section is on our driver vehicle inspection report. We have a pre-trip inspection as a systematic inspection of the bus by the driver before every trip or shift to ensure, to ensure that the bus is in safe operating condition. The same procedure is performed after the trip or shift, and that is the post-inspection. The in-route inspection, which we recommend, is anytime your bus stops, if you're stopping to get fuel, you would do a quick walk around and look for anything that's unsafe. We have our Federal Motor Carrier Regulation at the bottom, you can refer to. We also have a link in our state standards under out-of-service criteria that would tell you what's out of service for a bus and what, to help you determine when a bus is safe. As part of your CDL license, you'll go through a vehicle component section. That section identifies the majority of the criteria for your pre-trip and post-trip inspections.
Are there checklists for the pre-trip, post-trip, for the drivers to do, or is it just visual?
So there is a checklist. Right here, it says documentation must be filled out for post-trip inspections. That's a commercial motor vehicle rule. In our 2010 state standards, which is posted on our website, and I'll show you that in a little bit. No, I think that's in our classroom manual. We have some examples of the pre-trip inspection. So I'll work to get, we have a forums tab for pupil transportation, and I'll work to put those vehicle, some examples of vehicle inspection sheets on there. I think that'll be a great resource. Okay? Go ahead.
I think they are able to order those online as well. There's our inspection checklist and driver incident documentation. I know that they are available online. I haven't ordered them in a few years, but they are.
So the advice was, there are other options available online for the vehicle checklist. I actually, we'll show you an example of one that usually is tied to our driver's log. So another restriction we have is, we have two rules about hours of service. Hours of service, we have a 15-hour drive-on-duty limit. So the first limit is the 15-hours-on-duty limit, following eight hours of consecutive off-duty. You must not drive a commercial motor vehicle after being on duty for 15 hours. You may do other work after being on duty 15 hours, but you may not drive. So we also have a 10-hour driving limit. So you're allowed 10 hours of driving time after eight hours consecutive off-duty time. There's no limit on how many of those hours you are allowed to drive at one time. You may drive for as little as a few minutes or as much as 10 hours in a row. Once you have driven a total of 10 hours, you have reached the driving limit and must be off-duty for another eight consecutive hours before driving in a commercial motor So one of the challenges that we faced working in this district was, we'd often have to field trip to St. George and back in one day, and we cut very close on our 10-hour driving limit, we cut very close on our 15-hour driving limit. So depending on the type of trip you're going on, you have to send a driver down the day before to St. George, and have a driver drive your team down of students, and then switch drivers and have that driver who drove down spend the night in St. George and drive the district or LA vehicle back the next day to have that eight hours off. We also ran into situations where we were not going to be able to have an eight-hour consecutive time off before the next morning's bus were to school. So we often had to have our substitute drivers fill in on the morning run, so that that driver can get eight hours consecutive time off, which would then be sufficient for the rest that driver needs. This, I do have a guide to the hours of service, I'm just going to briefly go over this. This guide has a lot of the frequently asked questions, but this is the bulk of the rules, and then you can follow up with that guide. One more piece I need to add is, this also includes our drivers that have second jobs. So a second job for a driver where there would be considered on-duty, they would not have to be driving, would count toward that on-duty limit. And so you'll have to work with your drivers, find out if they're secondary-employed, or you're the secondary employer, and find out what hours they're receiving there, because you have to stay within the 10-hours driving time and the 15-hours of, which would be a combination of on-duty time and driving time.
The employee doesn't let you?
What's that?
The employee doesn't let you? So the employee doesn't let you know?
You should request it, and in a policy meeting, request that information, and then if they don't, they would file back onto that employee if it was in policy, right? Yeah?
I think in the last transportation meeting, they said similar to how the employee signs the document that if they're on a prescription drug, they'll notify you. They should sign something like that when they're hired, that says if I have secondary employment, I'll notify you, but then the school's covered.
Okay, so Scott said, just like, what did you say?
The prescription.
Like the prescription drug form, you would have that driver sign a form stating their employment outside of your education entity.
All right, I got another question on that 15-hour.
Yeah.
So if they, so...
Let me grab this.
So with 15 hours, is there any way you could, so it sounds like to me you almost have to charter a bus if you're going to have a long trip. You couldn't use your own drivers, you'd have to charter an outside company to take that, so that we wouldn't be, because it sounds like you can't send down one driver to drive all the way down there, with a second driver just riding on the bus to drive back, so that you're not violating the 10-hour rule for either one of them, but then you're, I would assume by violating the 15-hour rule from the down and back for that second driver that didn't drive, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so that would be correct. So the option is sending a driver down in a car or vehicle the day before, so that you can split that trip into two pieces and have Driver 1 drive down first, and Driver 2 bring the students, and then Driver 1 bring the students home, and then Driver 2 bring the car home. So that's one way we've done it in the past. Good question. Okay, this is an example of our driver logbook. Often on our logbook, the backside would have a pre-trip, post-trip inspection sheet that would be signed identifying any mechanical defects on your equipment. One rule we have is, we aren't required to fill out an electronic logbook, but we do fall under this rule where, a school bus driver must fill out a driver's log when they drive outside 100 air-mile radius of your normal work reporting location. So this may be new for a lot of people. This is an example of a logbook. This is actually hyperlinked and goes to an instruction guide. So when I send this out to you, you can look into this a little bit more in detail if you need to fill those out.
Is it the transportation directors who have it? Or is that Matthew?
Transportation directors have been taught. It was interesting, I had a meeting even this morning, and I showed this presentation just real briefly to see if they found any topics I missed, and throughout this meeting, I kept referencing things back to this. So I'm really excited that you'll be able to use this as a resource. For me, it was, you know, I created a slide on that. Let's go to that real quick, and we talked about that little piece, and so hopefully this will be really helpful to all of you. Okay, we have an administrative policy on use of electronic devices. So what I recommend is that you print out this R277-601. So what I recommend is that you print out this R277-601 and have drivers read through it and sign it that they will abide by that rule. Essentially, I'm just going to read one paragraph, but "A school bus operator shall not use a cellphone wireless electronic device or any headset, earpiece, earphones, or other equipment that might distract a driver from his or her responsibilities, whether handheld or not, while the school bus is in motion and not appropriately parked or secured." Once the bus is parked and secured, there are some official uses for the cellphone, and if no students are onboard, that phone could be used for personal use. But I would have your drivers go through this policy and sign that they understand the no electronic use law here.
Did you say smartwatches? I know some drivers have their smartwatch, but if they're going to turn, if they're around, they don't know it as well.
Okay. And point out all the stops on a Google smartwatch or product, okay. There is a couple of sections where it talks about a secured device. If the driver isn't, if that device would not cause a distraction, I would review that policy and see if that fell within that. And we can talk a little bit later on specifics. The idea is to not have things distract the driver. And so if it's, you know, if you ever make a wrong turn and you have repeated instructions, or you veer off because a student isn't at this stop and you're going to another stop, you know, that may become a distraction with some directions.
I know with events anyways, not really school routes.
Okay, yeah, we kind of recommended that, you know, we have our coaches or teachers onboard kind of help facilitate directions to help that. But yeah, read through that policy. Okay, this document here I want to spend just a couple of minutes on. Do you want to pass these out? This is still, there's probably still going to be another revision to this, but I think it's important that we get this out to you guys so that you have something to look at. What we've done is we've had a committee that's looking at our school bus driver instruction, and we've tried to really simplify our instruction into a requirement packet. This packet, we've pulled hundreds of pages and just pulled out the portion that applies to the bus drivers. So as we go through, it's hard to see, you'll have to look in your own book, but we have a table of contents that identifies the things that need to be taught for entering school bus transportation, entry drivers. We have annual instruction required by LEAs. We have biannual, semiannual, and we have some additional requirements along with a couple of recommendations. We put the recommendations in as well from our national standards. Also, we have a special education section. And really with special education, it comes down to instruction as required to meet the needs of the student. And so there's a few different items in the special education portion that'll be really helpful. We've also tried to include the reference, the link to that reference. So if you have questions, you want to look into this a little more in detail, you're going to be able to go back and forth looking at the full requirements. So this back page, and when we give our final update, we'll send you an update and where the electronic link is. The back page, I want to create a visual for this instruction. And so you can see I have different columns. Essentially, each column would be, we just discussed and talked that it would be great to have an additional column for the entry level requirements. So things you would do is you hire a driver and have year one, year two, year three, four, and five. And so that will be coming soon. But that's, I think will be a really good help for our education agencies across the state to have links to all the laws and requirements that are required for training. Okay, these next few slides I'm just going to introduce. We actually have, we're transitioning our driver training program. We're moving from our current state instruction program, and we're transitioning into an entry-level driver program. Entry-level driver training is a new federal mandated program. It will go into effect February, I believe, 9th, 2020. A couple of things that we're doing at the state level is we've had a committee put together information about what's required and comparing it to our program. We have also tried to understand what the differences were in our training. We're going to be heightening our bus driver training program. We are working through a process to make training more accessible to you guys. We're trying to find vendor programs that meet the new requirements. A couple of things we identified as we looked at our training program is that we had a lot of duplication. We were missing a lot of the advanced teaching methods. Our books are, were comprehensive, but they are about, I want to say close to 700 pages long for bus driver training. And we're looking at some other vendor products that will be able to allow some online instruction opportunities and hopefully give you guys a little bit more control over the instruction of your drivers in meeting those federal requirements. So we're going to have two big meetings to discuss the changes in our program, June 25th and August 6th. And we invite you all to have our instructors and our supervisors to come to those meetings. The second change to our program is we are transitioning from a, we've had a state required eight-hour in-service for many years, and we've had a recertification form. We are actually transitioning into a continuing education program. And that program is really built to focus on instruction that your drivers need. And so we're going to be going into that in a lot more detail. You'll have the opportunity to be able to use different training and instruction products to meet those requirements. Part of the new federal entry-level driver training requires us to keep track of complaints and our processes of how we've resolved those complaints. So if a complaint about a driver speeding, there would need to be a document or something documented that you talk to the driver about speeding. You've put him through an instruction program to protect your district and local education agency. This is, I'm trying to simplify our changes into a little flow chart. As you can see, we have our hiring process, which, you know, we have our application, reference checks, background checks. There will be a failed alcohol registry, so that will be another portion you have to check to see if those drivers have had a DUI or a failed drug test or alcohol test. Then you'll have the interview process. Next step would be, we offer the position with stipulations. You know, pass the drug test, pass the background check, require a CDL with school bus passenger endorsement as applicable, and pass our physical assessment. Our next steps, this would be for the entry-level driver training, is the employee would take the written test at the Department of Motor Vehicles. You would have your DOT medical physical. Take a copy to DMV, take a copy to your office or training facility, take your written tests, and you would begin your behind-the-wheel, your classroom theory and behind-the-wheel training. One of the big transitions is the transition from our state currently doing a time-based requirement, we're switching to a proficiency-based requirement. And so you'll have to demonstrate proficiency with that. And then, you know, at the end, you will take the driving test, pass the test, you'll be able to drive the school bus and take the LEA requirements required by the education agency. I know that's quick. We're going to have two hours for entry-level driver instruction and continuing education at the next, those two meetings. And then our continuing education here, you know, will be broke up into, once you have your entry-level driver training, the training that gives you your CDL license. We've really intended for this training to get people, our bus drivers, behind the wheel quicker. And so we've, before you would take, transport students with disabilities, you would take a special needs course. Before you transport students, you would take a behavior management course. Before you take activity and field trips, you would go through the activity field trip course as well. And then, one thing that will also be new is our directors are going to be able to identify training needed for those specific drivers. So like I said, if you have a complaint against a driver, that would be one course that would try to have the driver take concerns. I'm really excited for that. I've done some research. Everybody is transitioning to a continued education. Everything is moving to proficiency, and so I think we're right in line. Ultimately, our committee that put this together, we've been really excited. The outcomes of this project have exceeded what we expected. And so it's really satisfying and exciting for me to watch this change. Our next section is on state reports. And we have a couple of state reports. Working for the State Board of Education, we provide oversight, responsibility to monitor our LEAs. We have two reports, a Form F and Schedule E. Our Form F is our fleet statistics report. This helps us understand the age of all our school buses in the state. This is an important report. Every year, I send this to other state agencies, but we're really focused on trying to push for more school bus grants. If we can identify that we have more older school buses on the road, there are more grant opportunities. And I have, I'll show the example. And then we have Schedule E is our driver credentials report. Schedule E, actually, I'll just move to that slide for Schedule E. So this is probably hard to see. It's our Form F. It identifies our serial number of our bus, a bus number, beginning odometer, ending odometer. It calculates the difference. If you're retiring your bus, we have a couple of sections here. We have a comment. If you've changed it to speedometer midway through the year, you can identify that. It also gives you a total odometer for your education agency. Secondly, there's another tab that gives information about our buses and vehicles we use for transportation. So we have our serial number, seating capacity, et cetera, fuel type, purchase information. I don't know that we use that portion anymore, but there was a time where we did pay depreciation costs on vehicles. And so I don't see as much of that filled out anymore. Schedule E. This Schedule E report, this one's about a year old, and so there's quite a bit of red. As you look at it, I've added conditional formatting to this to where it helps highlight, in amber, it highlights 90 days towards an expiration. It highlights in red when they're expired. Because this is a year old, it is very red. This report is due December 15th every year. And a couple of categories that it has, it's looking at information about the driver, their background check, their CDL expiration, when their last drug and alcohol check was, their pre-service, which was their original instruction to become a bus driver, and their in-service. There will be a few categories in this that will be changing with our transition to our new program. Our DOT physical expiration and our physical assessment. And so once a year, I try to, I look at this form, and I'm looking for red to show if anything is out of, has reached an expiration. If there's a reason, we actually do have a comment section where you can put this driver has been off for medical or whatever it is. Our districts have been filling this out for many years. I know several of our charter schools have been filling this out. This new form has two macros. It's got a button to sort everybody by name, and it's got a macro that sorts everybody by expiration. One of the big challenges has been tracking the dates. When you have a district with 350 drivers, this spreadsheet has got thousands of dates. And the conditional formatting has really made this a lot easier. There, I have created a YouTube video that goes through the Schedule E in more detail. It's about 10 minutes long, and then I use a four-minute section at the end. Depending on your size of district, you can use the mail merge to create the names to send drivers reminders about their license expiring, about their physical assessment or DOT physical reminders. And there's a four-minute section at the very end of this. Again, this is hyperlinked. You can click anywhere on here, and it should redirect you to our YouTube channel for this. Okay, I want to talk a little bit about resources. I know I've covered a lot in just a little bit of time. And Jamie said you guys would be happy if you missed some of the Salt Lake traffic and got to go home early. So resources, our State Board of Education, we have a website. Department of Pupil Transportation on that will have different categories. We have a resource tab. We have policy instruction. We also have our state and national standards. We have a trainings tab. We're trying to put our instruction materials on. We also have a forums section, and we'll be adding to those. I've just submitted about 12 documents to be put onto our websites. Once they're approved, they'll be put on and be available for you guys. Here's a quick list of our best practices on the website. These have been created over many years. We have everything from behavior management, bus driver recruiting, best practices, school efficiency measures. We also have an evaluation form. The evaluation form kind of goes over different topics and helps identify where you're at and where you need to be and be able to create some goals for your education agency. I'm working with Jonah Crowley at American Preparatory Academy, and we're trying to set up a transportation starter guide for charter schools. We see more and more charter schools getting into transportation. From his experience, he shared with me a lot of the roadblocks he hit when he first started up. And so I'm working with him. If you guys have some examples of other things that would be important for charter schools that want to enter transportation, we just have been creating a list right now, but we're, how to get exempt license plates for your facility, resources for setting up fuel purchasing, so fuel cards that most of the districts are using. are using. Process for setting up driver history monitoring. One of the changes in our 2019 state standards is we've, we've had acquire a motor vehicle history report for each driver two times per year. This is our history monitoring option. This allows you to be, receive an email at the beginning of every month when there's a change. And if you're enrolled in that, you won't have to, and every year. We have just a short section on districts, like kind of public relations. You know, how can you, you know, what services, director meetings, instruction, maintenance, and inspection, you know, kind of, how to build public relations with, with school districts. I know many of them are helping you guys already, but again, another tool. He also mentioned product information. When you talk about school bus cameras, you know, which, which camera is the best? And a lot of that information would, you know, you can ask our local school districts that have a lot of different camera systems. Another thing was grant opportunities. There's a lot of school bus grant opportunities. We want to make sure that you're involved in, again, getting you my contact, or getting, you guys giving me your contact will help me notify you of any opportunities that come Okay, we have a lot of additional instruction opportunities. We have several programs within the state. We have some regional and national programs. I've been to a lot of these different programs. So our, the first one I want to talk about is our Utah Association for Pupil Transportation. There's a membership fee. I think it's pretty minimal, especially for what it covers. We do, we have a director's conference every year. It usually is a three-day conference, covers many different topics, and we, our board of, UAPT board really focuses on our pressing needs in our state. We also have roundtable discussions two times per year. We usually bring up information about changes that are coming. We like to ask what, what your, what challenges you're faced with. I know as a district director, those meetings, I learned so much at because I talked with districts my own size, or often when I talked to, when I had a problem that I had, you know, once or twice a year in Morgan, I would talk to the director of Granite, and he said, oh yeah, we do, we, we have that issue once a week. Here's how we handle it. And so a great opportunity to address, you know, what do you guys do in this situation? We're also, they are creating a utahschoolbus.net website for UAPT. This is going to be filled with safety information for school buses. We're hoping to have a training section. UAPT also hosts a school bus technicians conference. It's in Park City every year. This year, we have, I want to say we have 27 different classes offered in three days. We have a, we have a vendor show as part of the conference. There are more classes than you could possibly take, so we've, we've suggested go to those classes that would benefit you the most as a technician. In our state standards, we have a requirement for technician training. So maintenance and service personnel training are required to receive eight hours of annual in-service, and it should cover these topics. Our technicians conference meets those requirements and has been, has been very good for our technicians, helping train and instruct our technicians on common problems and a variety of topics for the school buses, all in order to make sure that we have consistency across our state and in having safety on our school buses. This next slide, I love. Men in Black was probably one of my favorite shows growing up. Jordan School District hosted a safety skills competition. We're, we're trying to get back into a yearly safety skills competition. This would test drivers' maneuvering capabilities. There's several different maneuvers a driver would, would do and be critiqued on. It's a very good instructional opportunity for your drivers. So as, as we get another safety skills competition ready, we'll send out an invite to make sure your, your drivers could attend if, if they would like. The next one, for, I don't know how many people transport special ed. We have TAEZ, which is a special ed law conference, which can be a resource to our LEAs. And this one is on July 29th, 2019. Talks about a lot of the current issues we have with special ed. The next one is our STN Expo. This is Student Transportation News. Provide a transportation training. This is a regional training, covers many different topics. I wish I would have gone to some of these when I was a director. I, I came back with so much more information, and I forward information, you know, things that I felt were important, I've tried to send out to people. You'll go through nearly 40 hours of instruction taught by professionals in the school bus industry at all these regional and national conferences. We have our transporting students with disabilities and special needs. I had the opportunity to go to this, that conference this March. It was incredible. Because of this conference, I've, I've been working with Lonnie Harden in Washington County. She's putting together a special needs best practice. From going to that conference, I've been able to add in information that I felt was important, and we're preparing a special ed best practice that's pretty comprehensive, and we're really excited about that. So you'll see that coming out soon as well. The next one is our National Association for Pupil Transportation Conference, NAPT. This is another big conference. Often, this, they will have classes ranging from route coordinating to maintenance, accident review, a lot of, I would say, is our operations. It's been a really good conference as well. So there's a lot of different options for further education here. Okay, I know that was, we went through that quick. Do you guys have any questions for me? Or are you guys overwhelmed? Okay, well, thanks for coming. Here's my contact information. You can write that down, and then I will work on getting my link available for everyone to participate, and I'll put that back up here in just a minute. So thanks again for coming. It was fun.
I just want to thank everybody for coming, either coming here or participating online. We really appreciate it. Also, those who helped me set up this morning, thank you again. It was a complete blank canvas in here, and me hurrying through up tables and chairs this morning, so thank you. Just to reiterate, all of these slides, presentation handouts that were passed out, I will make sure to collect all of those and get those on our website and then send out the link to everybody so they know where all that information is posted in case you didn't get it today. Other than that, I think that's all I have, so drive safely, and thank you, guys.